And Dr. Droui.
Yes, tonight we have some special guests from Lacumbre Junior High, who will give us a small prelude to the spring theater program this spring. Just go ahead.
Good afternoon, buenas tardes. It's the pleasure of Lacumbre Junior High to present a few songs from our spring show, Copacabana, Think Barry Manilow. I hope you're old enough for that. Anyhow, this is part of our Performing Arts Department, and these young proteges are going to sing two songs from the upcoming show.
Let me be a dancing fool. Something from the gap in Europa. Sipping champagne on a stool. Me, I get my case. Over. That's where I'm a dancing fool. I'll show you some moves, move that's sad and good, and others they don't teach in school. Now you're talking. Something's gotten. Rock wild. Just give me a chance and. My tuxedo pants and. Presto. I'm a dancing fool. Finally, I gotta dance.
I dare my city council or supervisory colleagues to have this much energy before a meeting.
Not gonna happen.
Mrs. Keynes, for the public, would you announce when the show will be, Lacumbre?
It will be Saturday, June 4th, 7:00 PM, in our amazing theater. So, we'll put out lots of advertisement. This was just a small sample. As you can see, the talent is amazing. Small part of the show. Thank you for the opportunity to perform in front of all of you and for the board. Thank you.
And on TV. Thank you.
Thank you.
We move on to the superintendent's report.
Good. I am pleased to report that a 7th grade student from La Colina Junior High School took second place in the National Macathon Finals in Chicago on Saturday. That's a big deal. He will be with us in the next board meeting. The Chrysler Apple Award winners for 2016 have been announced. Three of the five recipients are from our district, our school district. They are, secondary educator award went to Marilyn Garza from Santa Barbara Junior High School. The elementary educator award will go to Tracy Schifferns from McKinley Elementary. And the certificate support provider will go to Gwen Patterson from Peabody Charter School. These individuals will be honored at the May 26th awards ceremony in Bilton. This Friday is the Santa Barbara High School's Vada Spring Art Show. From 5:00 to 8:00 PM, there will be a public reception at the Community Arts Workshop on the corner of Garden and Ortega Streets. Art and design projects by more than 200 students in the Visual Arts and Design Academy will be on display. We have workshop programs at each of our traditional high schools. Our workshop programs are part of a career pathway from junior high school all the way to San Barbara City College. The three high schools are getting ready to start work on a tiny homes program. We plan to get in on the ground floor document and document the progress on the homes and postimages and e-news. Speaking of workshop, woodshop, our school district's first annual all districts wood show will take place June 1st through 3rd in Santa Barbara County Education Office Auditorium. Students from our three comprehensive high schools will present their projects on Wednesday, June 1st, from 6:30 to 8:30. And finally, I would like to point out the student work on display at the back of the room. These mandelas were created by La Colina Junior High art students in Nico De Leon's class. This concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Droui. Board, any comments? Correspondents? Mr. Herron.
Thank you, Dr. Paz. It was a pleasure to attend Adam's School a week ago, I guess. The Northside Rotary had their meeting there. They've supported the school for over 25 years, and they honored Dr. Amy Alzina with the Paul Harris Fellow Recognition, which was quite a big thing for Amy and the Rotary. So, thank you Rotary. The Wellness Committee met, and we had a presentation of most of the wellness days at the various schools, and the array of activity was really, really quite something to see what went on at these various events. I went to a harding review of the IB program that was presented for cabinet members. We visited every grade level classroom and had an overview of what's going on in the IB program. Quite exciting, up for a review, and I think they're well-prepared for it. Attended the League of Women Voters Forum on the Importance of Early Childhood Education, pre-K, a vital investment in our future. Dr. Droui was there, and fortunately, because the question came up about LCAP, and there's nobody better to answer those questions, Dr. Droui, so thank you. I politely declined. Michelle Robinson was a panelist discussing the district's activities as relating to early childhood education. So, well-attended by League of Women Voters members and a good presentation. I had a letter from a member of the public thanking us for something we did a while back. We approved sailing as a substitute for EDPE, and the sailing team at Santa Barbara High School has qualified for the Sailing National Championship, and they'll be going after that. But because of things we did, they thanked us for doing it. Isn't that nice? That's a great feeling. I hate to say it, but a recent Senate bill lifting the cap on our reserves didn't get all the committee. So, when we get other people up there, hopefully, we get a different result. Thank you.
Ms. Limon.
Ms. Parker and I had the pleasure of attending the All ELAC Celebration last week. It was attended by over 200 people. I know there's some folks in the room that may have attended, may have participated, so I just really want to thank our district committee. I don't see Dr. Jackie Mora here, but I know she was very involved. Our D-LAC group, it was pretty incredible, and I feel like it was really smooth. It was really smooth from start to finish. Also, big kudos to our food services program. The flan was excellent. It was really good. So, just thanks, it's always been one of, you know, my favorite events. I love all the events, but this one's, I love it. It's just one of the great events, really rich with, you know, good energy and folks and super cute, so it was great to be there.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to represent the board at the Dos Pueblos High School WASC visit that started on the 17th of April. That was a week ago this last Sunday, or a week ago from this last Sunday. And it's always great to kind of do those, for those who don't know, we, schools have to go through an accreditation process every number of years, and WASC is that body that does that. And it's always kind of interesting because you have educators from other districts come and visit and give their honest opinions about the work that we're doing in the district. So, it's kind of interesting meeting other people from other districts and the questions they had, so that was a great opportunity to represent the district at that point in time. Any other board comments? Okay, if not, we're going to move on to public comments on non-agenda matters within the jurisdiction of the Board of Education. I believe we have like six speakers tonight.
Dr. Paz, just want to be sure you make clear that their closed session action announcement that...
Oh, yes. Sorry, I passed that up. We had nothing to report on closed session. We do have student readmission that will occur a little later on the agenda. Thank you.
Okay, I'll read three people, and just so you know when your turn is to come up, and you'll have three minutes, and if there's translation, that will come after. First, we have Esther Elizade, then Alina Contreras, and then Ana Manose. Muñoz, sorry.
Buenas tardes al panel de la mesa directiva, representantes del distrito escolar y a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Esther Elizade y esta noche estoy acompañada por un grupo de padres de familia que estamos comprometidos en apoyar a nuestros hijos, que sean exitosos académica, profesional y socialmente. Actualmente estamos tomando un curso de Padres Adelante en la Santa Barbara Junior High. Tengo tres hijos, la mayor graduada de la universidad, el segundo está en la Santa Barbara Junior High, y la tercera en Peabody. Y quiero agradecer por el servicio de desayunos gratuitos para los estudiantes del distrito escolar. La semana pasada tuve la oportunidad de llegar a la escuela secundaria Santa Barbara Junior High y observar a una persona que estaba en una área muy accesible en la entrada de la escuela ofreciendo desayunos para los estudiantes. Pude ver que varios de los estudiantes se acercaron y tomaron los alimentos que se estaban ofreciendo. Me dio mucho gusto saber que se ofrece este servicio para los estudiantes dado que muchos de ellos no tienen tiempo de desayunar en su casa por diferentes motivos. Muchas madres y padres de familia tienen que trabajar muy temprano y no les da tiempo de dar desayuno a sus hijos, y salen de sus hogares sin haber probado un alimento. Se han hecho varias investigaciones, como todos sabemos, que comprueban que comer un desayuno nutritivo es sumamente importante. Los estudios reflejan que los estudiantes que comen alimentos al inicio del día es eficaz e importante para tener un alto rendimiento escolar. De otra manera, los estudiantes que no han desayunado podrían perder el enfoque en la escuela y podrían tener un nivel bajo escolar. Mi recomendación es que tantos padres como estudiantes estén informados sobre estos servicios para que ambos puedan beneficiarse de este servicio. Por su tiempo y atención, muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, school board members, school district officials, and all those present. My name is Esther Elizade, and tonight I am accompanied by a group of parents who are committed to supporting our children to be successful academically, professionally, and socially. We are currently taking the course Padres Adelante at Santa Barbara Junior High. I have three children. My oldest is a graduate of the university, the second one attends Santa Barbara Junior High, and the third attends Peabody School. I want to thank you for the free breakfast service for students in the school district. Last week, I had the opportunity to go to Santa Barbara High School, and I could see that a member of the staff was in a very accessible area at the entrance of the school offering students breakfast. I saw several students come and take some food that they were offering. I was so pleased to know that this service is offered to our students. For different reasons, many of them do not have time for breakfast at home. Many mothers and fathers have to work very early and don't have enough time to give their children breakfast, and they leave their homes without eating any food. Studies show that eating a healthy breakfast is very important, and that students who eat early in the day are effective, and it's important for high academic achievement. Otherwise, students who don't eat breakfast can lose focus in school and may have a low educational level. My recommendation is that parents and students are informed of these services so that both can benefit from this service. Thank you very much for your time and attention. Esther Elizade.
Thank you. Now, Alina Contreras.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva, administradores del escolar y todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Elena Contreras. Yo asisto a la clase de Padres Adelante en la Santa Barbara Junior High. Soy madre de dos hijos, uno en 7 y el otro en 12 grado. Quiero dar las gracias a las personas que han logrado proporcionar estos programas que son de alto beneficio para nuestras familias. La razón por la cual estoy presente es para pedirles que abran más espacios para los estudiantes que califican para Avid, ya que muchos estudiantes están en una lista de espera para poder ser parte de la clase. La clase Avid motiva a los estudiantes para mantener sus grados, aprender a evaluar su GPA, hacer responsables y enfocarlos para ir a la universidad mientras están relacionando con un grupo de estudiantes. Los estudiantes también tienen la oportunidad de ir a visitar algunas universidades y colegios que los motivará para planear la universidad. El programa Avid ha tenido gran éxito con los estudiantes participantes de Avid en una plataforma importante porque muchos estudiantes serán parte de la generación de ir a una universidad y de graduarse. Con programas como este da el apoyo necesario para muchos padres y alumnos que no podrían tener el mismo éxito si no tuvieran la oportunidad de ser parte de este programa. Por esas razones, les pido que se abran más lugares para alumnos que califican para Avid. Desconozco los motivos por los cuales el cupo se ha limitado, pero creo que vale la pena abrir un diálogo para dar más oportunidades a los estudiantes que están en lista de espera. Gracias.
Good evening, school board members, district administrators, and all those present here this evening. My name is Elena Contreras. I attend the Padres Adelante class at Santa Barbara Junior High School. I am a mother of two children, one in 7th grade and the other in 12th grade. I want to thank all those who have provided the educational programs that are highly beneficial to our families. The reason why I am present is to request that there be more spaces for students who qualify for Avid, since many students are on a waiting list to be part of the class. The Avid class motivates students to keep their grades up, to learn, to assess their GPA, to be responsible, and to help them focus to go to college, providing them an opportunity to interact with other like-minded students. Students also have the opportunity to visit universities and colleges, and this motivates them to plan to go to college. The Avid program has had great success with the participating students. Avid is an important platform because, for many students, they will be the first generation to go to college and graduate. Programs like this one provide the necessary support for many parents and students who might not have the same success unless they have the opportunity to be part of this program. For these reasons, I ask you to open more spaces for students who qualify for Avid. I'm not aware of the reasons for which the quota is limited, but I think it is worth opening a dialogue to be able to give more opportunities to the students who are on the waiting list. Thank you.
Next, Ana Muñoz, and then followed by Jose Villa Gómez, and then Santa Cruz.
Miembros de la mesa directiva de educación de personal del distrito escolar y a todos los presentes, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Ana Muñoz, y vengo representando a la escuela Santa Barbara Junior High. Estoy asistiendo a las clases de Padres Adelante en dicha escuela. Mi punto es sugerir que pongan más vigilancia tanto fuera como dentro de la escuela. Eso nos ayudaría a que los padres y estudiantes se sientan más seguros, ya que han surgido motivos por los cuales no sentimos esa seguridad, tanto estudiantes como padres. Pienso que es de suma importancia porque no soy la única madre que tiene esta preocupación, pero no todos tienen el valor de pedirlo porque no saben ni a dónde o a quién acudir. Yo sugeriría más rondas policiales por las calles durante las entradas y salidas a la escuela. Gracias por su atención.
Members of the Board of Education, school district staff and all present, good afternoon. My name is Ana Muñoz, and I come representing the Santa Barbara Junior High School, and I'm attending a class Padres Adelante at that school. My point is to suggest putting more surveillance outside and inside the schools. That would help parents and students feel safer, as situations have arisen where we have not felt that security, both among students and parents. I think it's very important because I am not the only mother who has this concern, but not everyone has the courage to ask because they do not know where or who to turn to. I suggest to have more security patrols on the streets around the entrances and exits of the school. Thank you for your attention.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la mesa directiva, administradores del distrito escolar y a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es José Reyes Villagomez García. Soy participante de la clase Padres Adelante y orgulloso padre de dos adolescentes. Quiero extender un complemento y agradecer por su ardua labor, primero que nada. Gracias por todos los servicios recibidos y todos los apoyos que hemos recibido constantemente de parte de mi familia, del grupo que vengo representando, y de la comunidad en general. El motivo de mi visita esta tarde es para motivarlos e invitarlos a que continúen incrementando los servicios de apoyo y educación a los padres de familia, especialmente a la comunidad latina, para poder obtener las herramientas necesarias para involucramiento de los mismos en la educación de sus hijos, siendo de beneficio para toda la comunidad. Siendo yo mismo y varios presentes, un testigo vivo de los programas para el involucramiento de los padres sí funcionan. Gracias por su tiempo y gracias por su atención.
Good evening, Board of Directors, administrators of the school district, and to the presence. My name is José Reyes Villagomez. I'm a participant of the class Padres Adelante at Santa Barbara High School, and I'm a proud parent of two teenagers. Beautiful kids. We want to extend a compliment and to thank you for your effort, and we're grateful for all the services and with all the benefits and support that we receive on a daily basis. Thank you in the name of my family, my group, and the community in general. The reason of my visit this evening, it is to invite you, to encourage you, to continue to invest, to increment the programs that will support and educate us, the parents, especially the Spanish-speaking community. We need your support one more to obtain the necessary tools to engage in our children's education, and we all know and understand the benefits of the positive impact in the community. Being myself and many presence, a living testimony that the programs like Padres Adelante works. Thank you for all your valuable time, and thank you for your attention. Thank you for all your valuable time and thank you for your attention.
Thank you. And we have Santa Cruz, followed by Laura Capps, and then followed by Laura Wilson.
Buenas tardes, miembros de la Mesa Directiva y administradores del Distrito Escolar. Mi nombre es Santa Cruz y soy madre de... Estoy en la clase de Padres Adelante en Santa Barbara High School. La razón por la que estoy aquí presente ante ustedes es para pedir más entrenamiento para los maestros, cómo tener una mejor comunicación con los estudiantes. Esto mejoraría el rendimiento académico de los estudiantes. Los estudiantes adolescentes requieren mucha paciencia, entendimiento para sobrellevarlos... Ay, perdón. Requieren mucha paciencia y el entendimiento para sobrellevarlos. Nosotros como padres sabemos bien que los adolescentes es en una etapa difícil en la clase. Es una etapa difícil. Como padres sabemos que los adolescentes están en una etapa muy difícil. Y las clases de familia que hemos tomado como Proyecto Padres nos han ayudado mucho. Y creemos que los maestros, si recibieran ese tipo de entrenamiento, tendríamos el equipo perfecto para los estudiantes y los padres. Gracias por su atención a esta petición y todo el trabajo que hacen por nuestros hijos. Gracias.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the school board, administrators of the school district, and everyone present. My name is Santa Cruz, and I am in the Padres Adelante class at Santa Barbara High School. I am the mother of a ninth-grade student. The reason I come before you is to ask for more training for teachers so that they get a better understanding of adolescent behavior and thus promote a better relationship with their students. Teenage students require patience and understanding to help them through this stage. As parents of teenagers, we know that this is not an easy stage, and the parenting classes Proyecto Para Padres that we have received have helped us tremendously. We believe that this type of training, if this type of training was available for teachers, we would have the perfect team to prepare good students, to prepare them to be who they will be ready to be in the future. Thank you for your attention to this request and for the great work you do for the betterment of our children.
Thank you. Next up is Laura Capps, and then Laura Wilson.
District administrators and board members of the board, it is with great admiration for the process of the conversation we just witnessed here that I stand here today, and also out of a deep respect for the public service that you do. I've had the pleasure of talking with many of you and have an understanding of the hours that you spend devoted to this public service, both here in the boardroom, out in the community, and at our schools. And that effective leadership is only made possible because of the team assembled here that allows you to do the job that you do. I'm also standing here as a graduate of these schools, Roosevelt, Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High School. In fact, the first speech I ever gave, I believe, was in sixth grade in front of the school board advocating on behalf of actual buildings at Roosevelt, which I get the pleasure of driving by several times a day and just in awe of the beauty. And my brother is here too, who's a graduate, and his son, Aiden, who is class of 2018. And so we share this experience of knowing what it's like to be a student at these wonderful schools here in Santa Barbara. When I think back to my time, of course, I'm grateful for the academic opportunity and chance to be an athlete that I had here at our schools, but the feeling and the notion I take with me most is the feeling of groundedness that our schools here in Santa Barbara give, the well-roundedness, the exposure to diversity, just at such a formative time of life to be exposed to a lot of interesting things, different people, and different thought. And that's a wonderful thing to treasure. And I also stand here, kind of right over here, as a mom with a son who's about to embark on this journey. If I do my math right, I think Oscar is class of 2029. He'll be starting kindergarten in the fall. And it's really because of Oscar and the schools here, one of the reasons I chose to move home three years ago, because the schools are so strong and I knew I could give him the opportunity that I had. But I also moved home to get involved in the community, and I've done that, working with some of you on school food and nutrition, working in environment, women's leadership, and other good causes. But when I thought about how I could really give back the most effectively and, you know, really what's at the heart of our community, it's our schools, not just for our teachers and our staff and our students, but lifting up the entire community. And the way to do that is by giving to the schools, and I know that's a commitment that each of you share. So I thank you for allowing me to be here today to announce my candidacy for school board and for the opportunity to learn by your exemplary example. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Wow, she's tall. And I remember that speech she gave. I was on the Rebuild Roosevelt Committee, and I remember that speech. My name is Laura Wilson, and I am also a product of the same schools as Laura Capp, Roosevelt, Santa Barbara Junior High, Santa Barbara High School, and UCSB. I've been active in the community for a long time, and I'm standing here tonight sort of in a what goes around comes around sort of thing. The Armory! Wow! For years. I've been talking about this with various people. I've talked to some of you about this. I mean, this has been kicking around forever. This is a marvelous opportunity. I really, really hope that we're able to craft something that puts together a package that we can go to the voters for and just get this done. It's obviously unneeded by the California National Guard, since they don't take care of it. It's a blight in my neighborhood. I live on Olive Street, right by the high school, and driving past there, you're like, "What? Why don't they take care of it?" We would take care of it. We know how to take care of stuff. It's really needed by K-12 students. I'd say right now, it's not the time to parcel out what it could be used for, but the flexibility that site would give the East Side youth and education organizations in that part of town would just be monumental. I am an East Sider, and I know the holes that exist in the system over there, and it would really, really be an asset to our community and, obviously, to the school district. So I just urge you to really give this thing your best shot, and knowing that there are many of us in the community that will go out and really try to make this thing happen. You wouldn't be hanging out there. People really do know how important that land and those buildings are to our students. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it. No more public speakers, so we will move on to the consent agenda. Board, do you have anything you would like to pull?
I need to pull something to abstain, and I am looking... Hold on, sorry. You know, I'm sorry, that's on action.
Okay.
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as listed and noting, in particular, the approval of the outdoor school contract for our science camp for sixth graders for next year.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Idelson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That moves us to public hearing, item E, but there are no items, so we move on to the action agenda.
Dr. Paz?
Yes.
Would you like to mention that the agenda included a public hearing later on on the agenda, but that's really not a public hearing?
Yes. We have listed as a part of our conference agenda is discussion of our local control accountability plan for 2016-17, but it's actually an update. So in case you got a copy of our packet, it listed it as a public hearing, but it's not taking place tonight. We have two public hearings that will take place in May, so no one's missing out on a public hearing or providing input onto the local control accountability plan. So just wanted to note that. The update tonight is mostly, if you're around and you like to pay attention, it's just an update and a little bit of discussion up to this point in time. And so no one's missing out on the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Herron. So again, that moves us back to the action agenda, and first item is Board Action Petition for Readmission of Expelled Student Education Code 489818, and the case number is 2014-15-38.
In case 2014-15-38, I move to approve the reentry of an expelled student.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Mr. Herron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Moves us to Approval Resolution 2015-16-29 Regarding the Elimination or Reduction of Classified Services. Dr. Droudi.
Mr. Torino will do the honor for us.
President Dr. Paz, board members, this in Education Code 45117, it requires that the notice of layoff be given when specially funded programs or services expire or are eliminated. The statute requires that we affected employees be provided a 60-day advance notice of a layoff. This is our yearly issue of layoff notices to employees who are in positions that are funded by categorical donation or other funds. In most years, the notices are rescinded once the district and school site budgets are finalized. The recommendation is that the board approve this resolution and authorize the staff to issue layoff notices to affected employees.
Thank you, Mr. Torino. Board, any questions, discussion?
I do need to abstain from this one.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion, Approval of the Resolution 2015/16-29 Regarding the Elimination or Reduction of Classified Services. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Idelson, seconded by Ms. Parker. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We move on to item number three.
With one abstention.
With one abstention, sorry, apologize. Move to item number three, Approval of Naming of the Tunnel at Peabody Stadium at Santa Barbara High School. Dr. Droudi.
Yes, I would like to invite Mr. John Beckio, Principal of Santa Barbara High School, to come deliver the message.
Thank you. Good evening, board members, superintendents. I'm actually here to give you guys gifts, but I mean, maybe we should do that after the vote. I don't know. We don't have legal counsel here to tell me what to do, but anyways, we do have some nice stadium mugs for you all, but I wanted to introduce Katie back. You know Katie, but I wanted to have her come up and speak to the naming opportunity that we're putting before you today, and she has all the information to share with you. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me back. So, as you know, I am the Director of Development for the Foundation for Santa Barbara High School, and we are working on a collaborative project with you all to renovate Peabody Stadium and the track and the field there. So, tonight, we are here to ask for your permission to name the tunnel in honor of the Hutton Parker Foundation. They have provided a $250,000 donation towards our $5 million private fundraising goal. It is quite an honor to work with the Hutton Parker Foundation. They have been long-term supporters of many causes in our community, especially in the development of organizations so that they can thrive on their own. Interestingly, several generations of the Parker family have also gone to Santa Barbara High School, and it was the younger generations, Jess and Chris Parker, who are graduates in the early 2000s that came on the site, that knew what it was like to not have a track on their school and see the deterioration, who really got the foundation on the side. So I'm hoping tonight that you will approve that naming. That was one of the opportunities that was listed in our fundraising agreement way back when, in 2014. And that's what I wanted to ask for. I also want to tell you, so we are now closing towards the second year of fundraising, and our goal is $5 million. And I'm also pleased to announce that tonight, we only have $350,000 left to raise of our $5 million goal, so we are really close. You know, that the district has partnered with the foundation has made the biggest difference, and it got us started and gave us credibility, so thank you for that. It is now time, I'm speaking to the camera over there, for all those other dons out there who haven't given to pitch in, because we are really close to our goal with only less than, well, it's about 7%, 5% or 6% that we have left to raise. So that was my other announcement.
Thank you. That's a great announcement. Board, questions? Yes, Ms. Parker.
Although they are not a family relation, the name is fabulous. And I highly approve. But also, just kudos to you and your team for the hard work that you're doing, and all the dons, past and present, for stepping up for this, because it really makes a difference and makes it more of a community feel for the new stadium. So, thank you. Thank you.
I would like to, on my side, thank the Hutton Parker Foundation. I know of their work and their incredible support of nonprofits in the community. I mean, you look at the number of buildings that we see around town, the number of the housed nonprofits are owned by them. And it's great because they do it for a purpose, and that's one of the ways they support nonprofits in the community. I think it's just a wonderful thing that they're extending that to supporting the work at Santa Barbara High School through the stadium, so I think it's a tremendous effort on their behalf of doing that.
Yeah, I should also mention that one of the biggest things that they really wanted in this renovation was a track and field for that neighborhood and that community. Even though the Parkers are graduates of the high school, they saw it as this is a rehabilitation of that entire area. So that was one of the reasons that really called to them in doing this.
Thank you. Ms. Limón?
I was going to make a motion. So, I was going to make a motion to approve the naming of the tunnel at Peabody Stadium at Santa Barbara High School under the name of the Parker-Hutton Foundation family.
Hutton Parker Tunnel.
Yeah, there you go. Hutton Parker Tunnel. And also, kudos again, and thanks to all of you for all your work, but also to all of those that have invested in this big initiative.
That's my motion. I'll second it. Thank you.
Motion made by Ms. Limón, seconded by Mr. Herron. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much.
Thank you. You really do have gifts.
Yeah. There you go.
This is where I donation went.
Oh, nice. Look at that.
Oh, I understand.
You get to see kids.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very nice. There is no cash there. We move on to item number four, Approval of the Rabbis' Calendars for 2016-17 School Year. Dr. Droudi.
Mr. Ms. Torino will provide the information.
President Dr. Paz, board members, cabinet, Santa Barbara Unified School District and the Santa Barbara Teachers Association came to an agreement on March 3, 2016 regarding the addition of professional development days for the 16-17 and 17-18 school years. Based on these additional days integrated into the calendar, the traditional year-round calendars for the 16-17 that were previously approved have to be revised. Please find the attached versions of the 2016-17 school year reflecting the addition of the two professional development days, and the recommendation is that the board approve these traditional and year-round calendars with the additional professional development days.
Board, any questions, comments?
Can you point out the new starting date, new ending date, and the two days that are now vacations for the kids?
So, the new starting date for teachers would be... So the new starting date for teachers would be August 15. The starting day for students would be on the 22nd. The ending dates would be in June, excuse me, thank you, Brian, on the 8th, and the last day of staff would be on the 9th. And so the two development days, the professional development days would be October 31st and I believe March 3rd. No, I'm sorry.
April 3rd.
April 3rd. So both of those are, the March 3rd is right after the winter, the spring break.
Thank you.
And the 31st is the Monday, so that it could be a three-day weekend for families.
Yes.
Halloween. Yeah.
April 3rd is the Monday, too.
Any other comments, questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll move to approve the revised calendars.
I will second that.
Motion made by Ms. Parker, seconded by Ms. Limon. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That moves us to item number one on the conference agenda, review and discussion of FM3 polling presentation.
Mrs. Meg Jete will do the honors.
Thank you, board members. Tonight, we have Adam Shosheim from FM3 to present the polling results regarding the possibility of a bond in November 2016. I hope I pronounced your last name.
That's close.
Oh, okay.
That's close.
B-, B minus?
I give you at least a B plus. So I apologize, my song and dance is only a PowerPoint with no musical accompaniment, but so we're going to talk through the results of a survey that we conducted back in, in March among residents here in the Santa Barbara area. And feel free, by the way, I'm going to go through this, there's more slides here than we have time for, so I'm going to go a little bit quickly. Feel free to stop me and ask questions at any point during the presentation. Methodology, just so you get a sense of how we did this, we did 624 interviews of registered voters. It was a mix of online, landlines, and cell phones. We did 304 interviews within your SFID area, 320 outside that area, and then we balanced it out so that you ended up with a representative number.
For the public, can you explain SFID?
Oh, yeah, the School Facilities Improvement District area, which is the area, roughly speaking, that the, the element, the Santa Barbara Elementary School District area. The survey, as I said, was done March 9th to the 16th. We offered it in both English and Spanish. When you see the results, the overall results, questions that were asked of everybody, the margin of error is plus or minus 4.0%. When we have the just questions broken out for within that School Facilities Improvement District or not, those are smaller sub-samples, and you see the margin of error is a little bit higher, 5.6 and 5.5 respectively. And then occasionally, you may see something that doesn't quite add up to 100%, just because we rounded some numbers here. Let me give you the key findings of the survey upfront, and then we'll get into a lot more detail about these. We have to test two ballot measures, right? One for the, that goes district-wide and one just for this elementary area. And each ballot measure is very strongly supported on its own. Voters in your, your School Facilities Improvement District are somewhat confused or need to consider more about having both measures on the ballot simultaneously. We asked about priorities for the use of funds, and we found the highest priorities are safety improvements, repairs, and technology upgrades. And then providing information about the measures helps clarify some of the confusion and increase some of the support. Okay? Okay, so let me give you the, the context. This was a kind of a basic opening question that we asked. Do you feel that things in your local community are headed in the right direction, or do you feel they're off on the wrong track? 49% said right direction, 30% wrong track, 22% were don't know. Anytime you see this DKNA, which you'll see a lot, that means don't know or no answer. Okay? And, okay, and then we, we asked a kind of establishment question about how they feel about your district and what's going on here. We found more than two-thirds believe that the district has either a great need or some need for additional funding. Only about 17% that said you have little need or no real need, and 16% that don't know. And I'll show you in a minute why that's a really important finding. This just shows that folks who are parents of your, in your school district, think you have more need than those that don't. Okay, so let's talk first about your junior high and high school bond measure. And, and I would just want to give you the rundown of kind of how we did this, so that when you see it, see the results, you kind of know what we did. For the folks who are not in the old Santa Barbara Elementary School District area, the survey was really simple. They just heard that, that high school and junior high bond measure, they got some information. We asked them how they'd vote again, they got some more information, we asked them how they'd vote. Okay, easy. If they're in the Santa Barbara Elementary School District area, it got a little bit more complicated, because they're going to see two ballot measures. Okay, so first, we asked them how they'd vote on the high school, junior high, then the elementary measure. Then we tell them, okay, what if both of them were on the ballot? How would you respond? Then we give them information and ask about both measures again, give them more information, ask about both measures again, and one more time, ask them if both were on the ballot simultaneously, how would you react? Okay? This is the language that we tested for the junior high and high school measure, and we don't believe in testing just sort of generically, would you support a bond measure? We find the most accurate way is to actually present some, a respondent with a 75-word title and summary that they could see. Obviously, this is not final, this is something that you all will decide on, but based on our experience and, and what we know from talking to administrators in the district, this is what we felt would be, would get the most positive reaction. And so I don't want to read through everything, but basically, we, we mentioned that it'd be repairing deteriorating classrooms, upgrading school safety, technology. The, the measure would, would be $152 million, and there'd be some accountability in terms of audits and citizens oversight, et cetera. The initial reaction to this $152 million bond measure is, is quite strong. 73% of respondents said they would vote yes on it, 23% said they would vote no, only 5% were undecided. We always want to take a look at the intensity level here, and we find that 46% are saying definitely yes compared to only 16 definitely no, so almost, you know, more than two, almost three to one ratio of definitely yes to definitely no, which puts you in a very strong opening position on this measure. I'm going to skip that one. Okay, I was talking about the need for funding before, okay? These are the people here who said the district had a great need for funding. It was 33% of folks who took the survey. Those people said they would vote for this measure at 92%. The people who said you had some need for funding would vote for it at 81%. If I scoot over here to the little or no real need, it's 23 yes, 76 no. Okay, so it's as complete a reversal as you could possibly see between the people who say you have a need for funding and those who don't think you do. Okay? The, the other good news for you here, these are the people that didn't know if you had a need for funding, and they're giving you the benefit of the doubt in large numbers, 69% to 22. We also mentioned how much people would be paying in, in property tax, the $13. This would result in a $13 per $100,000 of assessed value. And we find, as we do in almost every survey, there's a dip, but the dip is not, is not crushing, which is basically all we're looking for here, is that it doesn't go down to like 40%, right? You're still at a strong 62%, well above the 55 that you need to pass this kind of, of measure. Okay, so there's some reaction to the amount, but it's not as strong as we've seen in some other places. Then we had the elementary school measure, right? And again, only the people that are in the old Santa Barbara Elementary School District area heard these questions. Okay? The language you have for reference was almost identical, except we referenced elementary schools, playground safety, and one or two other words to make it balance out, but it's essentially the same list of priorities, accountability, et cetera. Here we find 69% would vote yes on this, 26% would vote no, and 5% undecided. Pretty similar in terms of the definite yes to definite no. This measure coming second after they've already heard a high school and junior high measure, we were pleased to see that there wasn't a very big drop-off once they got to this second measure. Okay? This is the, just showing the same trend on need for funding. I'm, I'm not going to go through it again. Again, similarly, when we, they were told how much it would cost in terms of a per $100,000 of assessed property valuation, there's a dip, but it's not dramatic, and you still stay well above 55%. I want to highlight some of the, the elements or ways that you could spend money and how voters in the district reacted to that. This is a question that we asked, how important are each of a, a number of ways that you could use money or, or elements that could be included in the, in the measure? And we ranked them from extremely important here in the darker light blue to the very important, somewhat important in the lighter orange, and not too important in the, in the dark orange there. What we see is that safety and repairs and a number of different places, career prep, quality teachers, those are the things that resonated at, at the highest level. One that we're seeing more and more in a lot of districts is a fairly new priority, is ensuring safe drinking water for students. Just want to flag that for you, because it's not one that is sort of a tried and true language that ends up in a lot of, of school bond measures. I don't want to go through all these, because it'd take all day, but science labs, classroom technologies, this is also, you know, well above 55% in terms of the way that people react to them on an importance scale. I know you're, you're interested in, in portable classrooms. We tested it in two different ways, replacing deteriorating portables. 26% called that extremely important, 34, very important, so that's 60% total, you'll see in a moment, if I can find it. Repairing deteriorating portable classrooms was a little bit lower. That was at 57 compared to 60. One thing I thought was very interesting, given the kind of nature of your community, things regarding energy conservation, increasing renewable energy sources, those were low, relatively low priorities compared to some of the other things that we tested. And then one that I think is also a good sign for you, requiring annual independent financial audits, less than 50% of people considered that to be important, which is a sign at least that they trust the leadership that you've been doing. We tested a couple of elements just for the elementary measure. The one that really jumped is providing adequate libraries at all elementary schools. And that is not language that I don't believe we had in the ballot measure language that we tested, and maybe something you want to consider thinking about a little more. Okay, so we tested a lot of information. We gave people statements about why the measure is necessary, how the money would be used. I don't want to go through clearly all of the words that are on here, but just if you look at the, the dark, the kind of bolded, this gives you the themes of each of these statements, repairs, technology, accountability, property values. There's some more matching funds, safety, water, energy efficiency. And then only in the SFID area, we mentioned that, that there were two measures, and it's necessary to make sure that the district can meet all of its needs. Not all of these were given to every person, these were mostly split sampled. And you can see, this is ranked on a, on a scale of convincing this, how convincing this, this statement is. And similar to what we saw in the project list, when we, when we wrap it up into this kind of statement, repairs, technology really stand out above, well above the others. The accountability, property values, matching funds, those are all sort of okay, but basic repairs and school technology upgrades seem to be the clear themes that, that resonate at the highest levels. Now, this is a little bit interesting. We start, this is where you started on this junior high and high school measure, which is 73 to 23. We, we, people heard a lot of stuff, including all those, those statements I just read to you, and the vote doesn't really change very much, kind of stays the same. Okay? Where that, there is change, I'll show you in just a moment, but similarly, on the SFID area, the vote doesn't change a lot. There's a little bit of growth here, particularly from the definitely yes to the, in the first vote to after all those statements I just read, see a little bit of a, of an increase. But it seems to imply that people kind of know a fair amount about why they would support this before they kind of even got into the survey. This is the path, you know, as we, we went through all the information in the survey, some of the statements that some opponents might make, all the things that you just saw here, this is the, the high school, junior high measure. You end up in a, in a very strong 68 to 27. Again, the, the threshold is 55%, and you have a four-point margin of error, so even if in the, sort of, if you, if you dropped those four points off and you were at 64, you're still well above that 55% that, that we want to look at. On the, the SFID area measure, again, very, very consistent, not a lot of change, not a lot of movement. Now, we did, as I mentioned, ask people to consider the possibility that there'd be two measures, and we, and we kind of put it in their face, right? If you're just voting, you're not necess, you, you're going to see two measures, but it's not, maybe not as obvious as if someone actually asks you, okay, these two are on the ballot at the same time, what, what are you going to do? So this is a bit of a harder test than just as someone kind of walks through some questions in a survey. And, and so we asked them if both were on the ballot at the same time, would you vote yes on both, yes on one, or vote no on both? Okay? We have to do a bit of compiling data from different questions to come up with these numbers, but what you see here is that on the high school and junior high measure, you were at 65% who'd be yes on that measure, 26 no, and 9% undecided. Okay? This is, again, a different, a little bit of a different test than what you saw in the line graph a minute ago. And then in the final vote, it's pretty similar, right? 64, 28, 7. On the elementary measure, however, you see a little bit of an increase. The interesting thing was the, the folks in the SFID area seemed to kind of, when they had to choose one or the other, if they were only going to vote one, they were a little more likely to vote for the elementary measure. But there's all those people who were already voting for the high school and junior high measure who didn't have a second one to consider, so they end up close to equal. In fact, the, the high school and junior high measure is a little bit higher. Okay? So again, this is a, not exactly how things play out on the ballot, right? When you go to vote, no one asks you to, you know, okay, what are you going to do? How are you going to vote strategically? But we want to give you that context and make sure that people got it. So that's, that's our presentation.
Okay. Or you want to do the?
Yeah, we'll do public speaker.
So for this item, we have Lanny Ebenstein to give public comment.
President Paz, members of the board, it's a pleasure to address some thoughts to you on this item, and I think I have a request to speak for the next two items as well, so you'll get me three times. I, I tell you, I appreciate the polling that's been done, but I don't think that it reflects the local circumstances. And I see the bond amounts being talked about as frankly too high and unlikely to pass. And I remember having this conversation before the Santa Barbara City College bond. Two years ago, polling had been done that was as strong or stronger in favor of a Santa Barbara City College bond at that point in time, with support in the 70% range plus, as with these tonight. That bond ultimately wound up with 50% of the vote with just a mild campaign against it. And the problem is with, with this sort of polling is that if you, if you had a poll from the perspective of people who are against the bond, and they asked all the questions first on why this would be a bad idea, and the different thoughts and all that kind of stuff, you would have different results than if you start out with positive information, even if you have then a simulation of a campaign, but if you've presented it from one side, the point is, is that the bond poll in the, in the Santa Barbara City College case was off by more than 20 percentage points at the end of the day. What, what really concerned me the most, and from the information that was gathered, presented, and this was, and I hope that we can get the materials from the district office that were presented tonight, the slides, so we can confirm this. But it was that what if you tell people what it's going to cost? What, what's the vote then? And the elementary district, my recollection is, is that it was only 64% said that they would support a $13 bond, of which only 43% were definitely yes. And similarly, in the secondary district, it was 62% would support that dollar amount for the bond, of whom only 41% were yes. So in putting forward a campaign, it seems to me what people have to do is say, these are the amounts that it's going to cost, particularly since it is two different votes that many of the voters in the district, about half the registered voters in the district, would be voting on. So I don't think that polls can be looked at in...
32 seconds.
Thank you. I don't think that polls can be looked at in isolation, and I don't think they can be looked at in, without reflecting on the local circumstances, and, and for that reason, as we'll also be discussing in the other agenda items, I think it's going to be look, better to look at, at bond amounts for slightly less, because I think that the, the polling data, from my perspective, indicates genuine concerns as to the amount of a bond that would be possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. If we have questions.
Sorry. Board, questions, comments? Ms. Parker?
And how exactly do you pronounce your last name?
Sun and Shine.
Sun and Shine.
Yep.
That's actually very easy.
It's really easy.
All right, Mr. Sun and Shine.
Yeah.
Some questions I have about the testing. Were different amounts tested at all, or was it just the one?
No, in this case, because we had so much of the real estate of the survey taken up by having two measures, we didn't have the opportunity to test multiple amounts.
Okay. And I also was wondering, I don't know if you were aware, that we have parcel taxes in both of the boundary areas that are expiring in the fall. And I don't know if that got tested at all. Does it make a difference to people if they're paying less?
Yeah, so one of the things that we didn't do, which, it depends on your approach, we didn't talk a lot about continuing tax rates and expiring tax rates, things like that. And we find that generally speaking, that would help, but the fundamental point is, do they like what you're going to be spending the money on?
Right.
So that was the thinking there.
Right. And, not a question for you, but just a couple of comments. One is that, you know, it has come out in the news more recently, this prospect of us being able to purchase the National Guard Armory. That would certainly need to be something that was done through the bond, but just for members of the public, looking at the polling piece, you know, this all happened, you know, came to light rather suddenly, and certainly past the time where we were considering it in terms of, you know, pre-polling, how that would fly with the community, so that's why that's not included. Obviously, the numbers are, at this point, those are great numbers for this stage of considering whether to run bonds. I do appreciate Dr. Ebenstein's points, however, since we had a local example of something that went very, very south.
Yep.
And so I do worry about us running two bonds at the same time. It's kind of, we, the district didn't used to do that, and the last go-around we did, I don't know if it's more confusing to the public, though, if you run them separately, you know, run them a year or two off of each other, and people then think, "Oh, didn't I already approve this?" And so then they're confused, is it better to have them together or separate? I'm not sure, but it is a little worrisome. So, thank you, and I guess we'll...
And I want to just add one thing, because I think what the gentleman said was a good point, that we did test in the survey, the sort of way that the survey was constructed was with the concept that the district would communicate, that the district would go out and talk to folks in the community about why this measure is necessary, which is why we had the informational messages from the kind of, the more of the district perspective first, followed by opposition. And it is entirely plausible that if you don't go out and kind of, what's the word for, reinforce the support that's out there, that if someone comes in first and starts chipping away, they may be more effective than what shows up in the survey.
Ms. Tidelson.
What the $13 per 100,000 assessment value, what does that play out to as a full number for the bond for both areas?
For each, for the...
We have that information later.
Oh, okay.
With KNN's information that we're going to give you in the financial part later.
Okay. Tonight?
Mm-hmm. Tonight.
Mr. Herring.
In a vacuum, these numbers are what they are, but do you have any feel for, you know, right now, at least what I saw in the past election, you know, we have six or seven separate bonds on the tax bill. And, you know, and this adds two more to the tune of in the elementary district, $26.
Right.
I didn't see where you asked anybody, you said 13 here and 13 here, but what about 26?
Right.
And what about added to the current $50 that they're paying, so it becomes 86? Do you have any feel for those numbers?
I think that the, I don't have a feel for the addition to what people already pay, because the reality is that when people go and vote, they're not taking their property tax bill with them. So what they know in their head, when they take the survey, is the same as what they would know in their head when they go to votes. We're trying to replicate that as much as possible. I think anything, clearly, as you saw, the more time that is spent on talking about how much this costs people, the less you're talking about what it does for their schools and their local property values and their kids, and that's to your disadvantage.
All the opposition will be talking about is the number of tax bills, number of taxes on their tax bill.
Yeah.
I mean, that was loud and clear in the city college, it'll be loud and clear in ours.
I'm sure it will, and I think that there's, you know, one thing that, another caveat that we couldn't capture, because we do have a limited amount of space in a survey and too much uncertainty at the time we did it. There's going to be a lot of other stuff on the ballot, there's going to be a lot of kind of uncertainty in terms of the turnout of the election, we don't know who's at the top of the ticket on both sides, there's a lot of unknown factors. And what we know so far is that you start out with pretty strong initial support for either a secondary measure or an elementary measure, and pretty good support for both at the same time. But the potential for something to be, to happen over the next several months between now and November is something that the poll, even in our best efforts, can't always capture and predict.
One more thing, I also noticed, it seemed to be repairs of portables more than replacement of portables.
Actually, the other. And it was not a very big difference, but the district is one of the few that I can remember where replacing actually tested a little bit better than repairing. So if I go back here, replacing deteriorating portable classrooms with permanent buildings, that was 60%, either extremely or very important, with 26% extremely. And repairing was 57% with 20% extremely important. So not a very large difference, really at the statistical margins, and...
I guess my point was going to be, in my situation, that was a very high priority. I didn't get the impression in reading this that it came across as a high priority of the board.
Oh, yeah, well, it's not, it's not a, the way we ask it is to find out if it's a high priority of the voters. And comparatively, it's not, it's not one of the top things. It's still, you know, more than half of people think it's an important thing to do, and only a few people think it's kind of not important at all. Only 14% fall into this not-too-important...
But sometimes our job is to lead, not follow.
Absolutely, and I wouldn't tell you for a second that you shouldn't do something that you think is beneficial to the district.
Ms. Limon.
So thank you for the presentation. Some of what I am taking out, just from, based on the comments that were made here by board members, and what I'm hearing, is that in some ways, I don't hear, and it could be because we didn't test it, that the amount is as big of a concern as the number that, you know, Mr. Herring just referenced, that in the last local bond, a lot of the opposition was around the number of taxes that folks see in their annual reports. You know, I tend to think, though, that higher ed and K through 12 are not in the same realm for the community. And not that they should be separate, or they should be together, but it's hard to really look at what happened with Santa Barbara City College, because it's not, we're not comparing the same thing. It's harder for higher ed to pass bonds, it's just, it's not the same thing as K through 12. So that's something that I think about. I also think about the fact that if it's not the amount, what does it mean to see more? And, you know, I know there's other things that are going to be on the November ballot, Galita has a library kind of initiative going on, and we are likely to see something at the state level as well, and so I think of that, and what, how that plays into the number. Now, it's also been recognized that our context has quickly shifted from three months ago to now, to the conversations around the possibility of acquiring a new property. And that's, that's a big deal. I mean, people are talking about that, at least I've, you know, I've had people talk to me about it. I also don't know, though, and I don't know who I should ask, but there's different ideas, but one theme that we're supposed, that we, if that property ever were to become a reality, you know, it says career, technical, education, and recreation. But if there's going to be a district investment, is it in our best interest to pass two bonds, where a little bit from each goes into an initiative that would be for district-wide, bigger? Or really, is there the ability to only do one? So if you only pass, like, the high school bond, then you can use that money for that? Or do we need to pass two, because the needs are different? I just don't know that level, but that would influence, because of the popularity of the armory, knowing whether we should pass two bonds or one would influence me personally. And I don't know the answer to that. I don't, Mr. Tay, maybe you know? Or maybe we don't know yet, and that's something that we'll bring back.
Yeah, I think that would be the answer to your question.
Yeah. Well, and that would personally influence how I think of moving forward with two. I, yeah, I mean, and we're probably going to have to make a decision about how we move forward before we know for certain everything else that's going to be on a potential ballot initiative, a ballot in November.
The way I look at this is that this is the dipstick that we're putting into the car right now at this moment in time, and you have no idea what it's going to look like in November. Your car, it may run into a tree, it may do something else. And that's part of what we're going to look like, or look at, excuse me, from now until that point in time, and figure out what exactly is going to be on the ballot, and what we need to figure out in terms of a number. I mean, because that is a number, as you put it, there were, there was an opportunity to look at other alternatives, and maybe a lesser amount to Dr. Ebenstein's point. And I think that's something that we as a board are going to have to grapple with, and figure out what is the number that we're going to be comfortable with, and what is the number that ultimately the public, given everything else that they're going to be faced with, is going to be comfortable with at that point in time, absolutely.
But what we do know is there will be another tax initiative. That's certain.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, there will be another tax initiative, whether it's a local one or a state one, you know, and how many of them.
Yeah, so many.
But, I mean, we've had things that have qualified.
Yes.
So, we know that.
Ms. Parker.
Do we know when the deadline is for us to craft language and take a vote on whether or not we want to have this on the November ballot?
We have to adopt a resolution for the calling of the bond election by June 28th. We have to deliver the election to the Santa Barbara County Register by July 7th.
Okay. I would also say that, you know, there's also a deadline for items going on in, on the November ballot as well. We should look at that date. I don't know what it is off the top of my head, but we should look at that, because they, obviously, if it's a ballot initiative that needs to collect signatures, they need to have collected signatures by X month date, and if they haven't done it by now, they're probably not likely, but we can, we can look at that as well, and figure out what is sort of a drop dead deadline that we could impose on ourselves to look at everything with that deadline in mind. Any other questions, comments, board?
When will this be on the website? Tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate it.
That moves us...
What are our next steps?
Next step.
Maybe what we could do is go through the next two items and then have a conversation after that, so you have all the information that you need, possibly? Is that a plan?
That's agreeable.
Okay. Okay. So...
We move to item number two, update and discussion on facilities priority list.
So Kelly Cole from Teluk, who is here to present the proposed facility priority list.
We do have a public comment on this item.
Lanny Ebenstein, three minutes.
Thank you very much. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to come up again, and just a quick comment, too, in terms of, remember, what if a poll were asked that said, "What's your support," knowing that there's going to be three measures on the state ballot with respect to taxes? There's going to be a Galita library tax. I believe the Galita Union School District also has a bond that's going to be on the ballot, and the county of Santa Barbara has the transient occupancy tax on the ballot. Now, what's your percentage support? So the point is, is that these are fluid numbers. However, having said that, I think it's an excellent idea for the Santa Barbara Unified School District to place bonds in both the elementary and secondary portions of the district on the ballot this November. I think that they should be for lesser amounts than have been considered to some extent, but at the same time, I think there are needs in both districts. I want to speak specifically, I agreed very much with Mr. Herring's comments with respect to the board leading, and the board's job isn't to follow, but to lead. And I think that both with respect to portables in the district, particularly in the elementary schools, and with respect to the National Guard Armory, which I also think would be politically popular, that the district should move in this direction in its 150th anniversary. I think, again, speaking specifically to the National Guard Armory, I think that an idea to consider would be at least with respect to acquisition, having half of the $10 million figure in the elementary and half in the secondary, even if the full $10 million for improvement were in the secondary, because I think that would bring both districts into something that's very important to both districts. It's long been desired that there be another elementary school, if possible, another neighborhood elementary school on the east side. That may not happen for 20 years, it may not happen for 40 years, but it's something that could happen someday, and for that reason, to have some elementary district ownership, and as well with the idea that it's going to be a preschool through a community college site, is something that it would be an outstanding investment for the districts. I think districts should do whatever necessary to get those sites, that site in both districts' hands. And then, as I say, I think that you're going to have to look at a very, these budgetary items with a very fine-toothed pen, and then figure which are the highest and most likely to be successful...
30 seconds.
...with the community. So with those thoughts, I encourage you to go forward, please don't misinterpret my comments, but I think that's the amount and the exact purposes. And again, I would strongly encourage that the armory and portables be prioritized in both districts. Thank you very much.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You said, put $5 million in one and $5 million in the other. What if one fails and one passes? Then your $5 million is required to buy something.
I hear you on that. I guess my feeling is that in that situation, and that's a real possibility in terms of, because I do think the climate, political climate has changed with respect to school bonds, and there will be other things on the ballot, is that I feel that at least the acquisition could be secured in terms of, I don't think in the long run, it's the acquisition cost that's the big factor, it's the development cost. So from my standpoint, as long as it passed in one district, you know, we don't know it'll be $10 million, it may only be $6 million or $8 million. I think that through foundations or other sources, the site then could come into the purview of the district. So I see that actually as a, kind of a conservative approach that more or less would be, because what if you put it all in the secondary and that loses, then it'd be very difficult. But if you put on the acquisition half in the elementary, the elementary's always had more higher votes than the secondary, and then you'd have that opportunity perhaps. So that would be my quick thought on that. Thank you.
All right, we're ready.
Okay, Kelly?
Hi, Dr. Paz, members of the board, everybody here tonight, thank you very much for having me. So we were asked to put together this list, the last one that was presented to you was on October 13th, 2015, and there's been a little bit of time to go through and, you know, sort of refine things we did before. We were asked to categorize them by each district, of course, and you can see we're starting with elementary here, and some different categories of things to, categories of types of projects that were potential projects, and of course, starting with the portables. You can see right off the bat that on 1D there, I have a little bit different number than Mr. Son and Shine had for the elementary, so he had $52 million shown. I was given a number of 58 a little early on, and sort of stuck with that. So a little bit of difference there, but you can see this is quite oversubscribed on this particular district. Starting with the largest number, the portables, does take into account on every site replacing all the portables. So to offer a brief example, let's pick one where...
So to offer a brief example, let's pick one where has a lot of portables that you are very visible and in poor shape, the Peabody Charter School, for example. You've got that, that sort of curve, that arc there on the back that where they're really, really bad condition, but then somewhere by the kindergarten area, which are a little better. So possibly you could dice this up a little bit and make, and take some out and make the project a little bit smaller on Peabody. And same thing sort of like with Adams, for example, where we just put some money into some portables, where we're relocated with the library project and some improvements there. And, but some of the older ones, you could also, you know, cut this down a little bit by just separating out for different projects.
Excuse me, Kelly. I just want to make it really clear that when we say replace portables, we're talking about replacing them with a permanent structure.
Right.
Not bringing new portables in. So I just want to make that really clear because it's hard to, you know, get into this without explaining that these are going to be bricks and mortar.
That's been the plan all along, so thank you for clarifying that. So the number could be brought down considerably and of course, would have to be. And there could be some further direction from the board on how you'd like to see that go. Do we do all of one campus at one time, or do we sort of divide that up? And we can come back to you with any type of revision you'd like to see on that.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
As long as you talked about every portable versus some, because to me, the high priority was those that are 20 years old or older, or 20 maybe, I forget what the number was, 25 years or older. But I noticed on this, as you said, whether it's eight years or 40 years, you're talking about replacing them. How would we go about saying, because I know in many cases, you've got to take them out to build a building.
Right.
But you're saying like, there are some situations where we wouldn't have to replace every portable.
Yes.
We could make a conscious decision. How would we go about doing that?
Very good question. We've done an assessment of them by age and by their, and by their general condition.
I noticed a lot of poor and a lot of serviceable.
Right, a lot of poor and a lot of serviceable. And some of them are serviceable, you can get some more, some more years out of them. Maybe you move them to a different site. Perhaps you can move them to a different, I mean, a different place on that site. Maybe there's, you've got some here that are two or three that are in poor condition, you've got to get rid of, but you have maybe two or three next to it that you can leave for a while. And you have some other sites that are sort of timing out, that have some, some that are, you can move over there. You know, we relocate them from site to site. So there is a little bit more of a study to be done on that. Really, that would be something that, once we start to get these projects underway, as far as the design, the architectural firms that would be designing the site, site projects would be really in a good position to, you know, sort of make real good recommendations on that.
What we need to know earlier than that is what, how much of a bond are we going to go out for? And if we're not going to include portables that are serviceable, that would change the dynamics of how much money we would need in a bond.
Certainly.
Because a lot of people will say, why are you replacing a serviceable portable? That still has life in it.
And also, please bear in mind that we're a few years ahead of the curve here. So some of them that might be listed as a 19-year-old portable that says in the serviceable column, which we actually did that in fall of 2015, by the time we get to it, it might be in the 22 to 24-year-old, you know, lifespan, and by that time, it might be ready to go. So there is a little bit of forward projection to be done. This would be a fluid process. So are there more questions about replacing the portables with permanent buildings? I know we've all talked about this, and there's also a matrix that's attached that is by campus, by site, so you can see what the costs are on each one of them, how it breaks down. Moving on, Mick, can you move me down to the next page? All right. So moving into other projects, some of the priorities that were established came from staff, came from maintenance operations and facilities, and discussions with Dr. Cash and Ms. Chatey also. And these were, these were taken from the list that was presented in October also. You can see one, it's sort of by the top there is McKinley Elementary Hillside Stabilization, which might represent a significant liability for the district if we don't do something to stabilize the hillside. And we have it broken down, of course, into kind of two parts, there are study and remediation. By the way, these figures were taken from 2014 originally for the last list, the end of 2014, and then we had brought them forward to October 2015. Now, assuming that we pass the bond and that we can, we can start the bond on January 2017, we're looking at about a six-year bond horizon. And so these are all calculated to the midpoint of that, all calculated to the midpoint, so about December 2020. I'm sorry, yes, 2020. And so when we start to really assign projects and put together a master schedule, you know, some of the numbers will go down a little bit, some of the numbers will go up, we'll get real estimates, but things should average out more or less. So that's, that's what the estimates are taking you to, to about the end of 2020. Some of the other things were sort of consistent with, with items on Mr. Sonenschein's list, safety, some roofs, of course, you know, asphalt playgrounds, safety for students, you know, preservation of capital, the roofs and heating systems, you know, things that we really need to have just to keep the, keep from losing some of the investment you have in some of your buildings. So those are the priorities that staff identified. Want to move on to secondary, or any questions on this so far?
I have one comment about if there is a state bond, we will have matching funds. And we also have things in the hopper right now up there waiting for, as soon as they get it, we will get that cash pretty quickly. And with McKinley's Hillside Stabilization, there is money, some money. It's a huge job, as you can see, but there will be state money if that bond is passed. And it's looking fairly decent.
Well, there is a state bond that has qualified.
Right.
For the November ballot.
For a bonding.
But it's polling well, too.
Yep, it's on the website.
All right. So we need to go down a few pages unless you want to stop on the portables.
Obviously, on this, total was 131 million.
Yes.
Which far exceeds maybe reality. How would you go about dramatically lowering that number?
We would go back and look at the portables primarily, because that's where the largest number is, and look at where the greatest need is, where the greatest, the oldest ones are, which are just, you know, literally like falling apart, like we mentioned, some at Peabody. Cleveland is another example, the ones that are on the front on the brow of the hill there. You know, take a look at that and see what we can do to just have to prioritize the future capital campaigns.
Thank you.
Yes. And let's see, we're on the secondary now. So you can see the secondary, we used a $156 million figure at this time on a line of 1D there, and this time, we're only 4 million off for our numbers together, so that's not too bad. Pretty close. And you can see the portable replacement was not quite as, quite as dire. Of course, you have only the three sites. And felt like those could all be accommodated within, within the amount that's being proposed. And there's a line item, of course, the property acquisition and development, which was directed by Dr. Cash, has just an estimate of what he thinks the purchase price would be, plus another included in that would be $10 million for the site development and reconstruction. So of course, it's really early, as you've all mentioned, and so it's difficult to put a price on that right now, but there is a placeholder there for you. And then other projects, again, taken from the priority list, which was presented in October, and then revisited by staff. So if you want to just sort of slowly scroll down there to the next page, you can see where that starts. And these were rated and rerated again by facilities and by maintenance as a high, a middle, and a lower. And the ones that are higher are a little higher on your list, and the ones that are lower are a little lower down. You'll notice also that under the physical education athletics, there's a set aside there to complete Phase II of Peabody Stadium.
Are these in a priority order from your viewpoint, top to bottom?
Yeah, more or less, and within each category they are.
And it was a conscious decision to put the 20 million above all the other priorities?
Yes, we were asked to just make a separate line item for that because it is, it's something that's come along new.
Yeah, so if we have to cut that number down, we're taking out priority items to cover the Armory?
Yes.
Because at some point, we have to draw a line and say, okay, we can't go 179, we've got to go 144.
Right. I'm of the thinking you can get probably, you can get possibly halfway there with just the methodology we talked about with the portables before. You know, in, there's some that can remain on Santa Barbara High School, the 40, 42, 43 building up in front are in pretty good shape. But now that I think about it, there's some on San Marcos that are in a little bit better condition, the I Village, you could maybe dice that up with the S, the S cluster there that's by the, by the athletic field. It should really go. You know, there's just some of these areas where they're, they're really in need of being replaced. So you could probably get there with just working with the portables. And I think the other thing we did last time in, excuse me, in October, was on the window replacements, you'll see at the bottom of the first, the first category there. Those are approximately 50% of the numbers that were brought forth in the assessment study that we did in 2013, presented in April 2013. So we looked at that again and said, well, can we do the sides of the buildings that have the worst wear and tear, like for example, Lacumbre Junior High School where it faces Port Suelos, that's hot all day, morning, all the way through, all the way through midday and into the early afternoon, you get that direct sun. Maybe we do that side of the building first. Look at about 50%. So there's probably a little latitude in those three window projects also. And you see, they're not really big numbers.
13 million is not big?
It was three, it was double that before. We took 50% of it off.
13 is still big.
Yeah, I know, it seems like a lot of money. We do have some estimates from a local millworks manufacturer that duplicate the historic building windows just like they are. So it's an expensive process.
How much do we spend on maintaining those windows now?
I don't have figures for you. I'm sure Mr. Visalini can provide, provide that for you, but I do know they have a lot of calls where they go out and they have to replace glass, and, you know, if you go into some of the classrooms, you see where they put metal brackets to hold the sash together. They recently spent, they spent around $900 per sash. You know, the windows are usually gang together tall. You look at Santa Barbara High School, they call them multi-gang windows, and they all open up together. Just to buy one, it was a little over $900 for one of the sash. And then they went and bought two for Lacumbre Junior High School, and it was about 2/3 of the price. So it was a real economy of scale on, on replacing those, but yeah, just do it by bits and pieces is a lot more expensive.
What's more important, the windows or the Armory?
Oh, I can't make that decision for you. It seems to me the Armory is a fantastic acquisition, and whenever you get a chance to get real estate, go for it. We might, it would be, my suggestion.
So if we had to sacrifice windows, that...
Or something else.
Well, but I'm just taking windows. That's 13 million, 12, 13 million, that's a big chunk of the Armory.
Sure. If you don't own something, you know, you can't use it for your educational purposes, for your student instruction in the community if you don't own it. So I would just say that's, you know, the opportunity to buy the, buy the property is fantastic.
Because something has to go if we do that.
It does. We'll certainly be looking for direction from the board and from Dr. Cash and Ms. Chatey on which direction you want to take this list.
Yes. Any other questions, comments? Thank you so much.
All right, thanks for your time.
Thank you. We move on to item number three, bond financial update provided from KNN Public Finance.
Okay, Joanna Boz from KNN is here, and she and I will present this together. So you can come on up, Joanna, and I'll just walk you through the few slides.
Can I ask one question?
We also have...
Did we have any direction for staff regarding the priority list?
Not yet.
I think, I presume they want to leave here with...
I think what we wanted to do is wait till this last presentation so we can take them all and then provide some direction. We also have a public speaker for this item, Dr. Evenstein, if you'd like to come up right now, that would be great for our... Do you want to wait till after the presentation? Great, thank you.
Okay, so on page two, which it says page one at the bottom, I put both slides on one page to conserve costs and trees. So on the slide one, we have the secondary school district assessed growth, assessed value growth, which you can see over a three-year average, we're doing pretty well. In 2015, 16, we were up 5.51%. Oh, that's the elementary. Okay. So, sorry, that was the elementary. So in the elementary, it went up even higher by 6.43%. So the assessed value is growing in Santa Barbara. In my budget, I put it as a 2% growth, so I'm very conservative, but as far as the LCFF is concerned, it all works out anyway. So here's the secondary, and that went up by 5.51%, three-year average of 5.2% AV growth. Here is our, this is the wrong slide. Sorry. This slide has been corrected. As you can see, the current bond capacity for the secondary district, we have 15, 16 total AV is 42 billion, times 1.25%, gives us 524,000 million, sorry. And then that should be just subtracting the 112 million dollars, $100 million, and then the balance is 412, I believe. Yes, 412 is our available bonding, our par amount for bonds. And then on the high school, it's the, or the elementary, it's the same way, only the math was done correctly on that one. And the par amount available for bonds is 128 million. So I asked KNN to draft up some, what some numbers would be in, at different levels of the tax levy, which would be the assessed value of every $100,000. And we did a $12.50, a $13.14, and the par amount ranges from 58 million to 65 million. So in the SFID or the elementary district, we're well below our bonding par amount, our bonding capacity. So this, all of these have no cabs in them, absolutely none. For the secondary, again, we did 1250, 13, and 14 dollars per assessed value, $100,000. And that would leave us with 100 and, almost 152, and then 158 and 171. So again, we're well below our par amount. So that's the latest on our financials. So I have Joanna Boz here to answer any questions, or myself.
Ms. Parker?
Can you remind me what the tax levy per $100,000 is for our existing bonds?
I think they're 1250.
One of them is 1250, and one of them is 1368. The elementary school's different from the secondary school.
Great.
1248 and 13...
I think it is 68. You're going to be super precise, okay?
Sometimes you don't think you're ever going to forget a number, right?
I have the 1314. I don't have 14, 15, 16, but in the elementary, we have three different bonds, 188, 1154, and 653 for 1995. And Santa Barbara High School District, or the, I mean, the secondary district, one bond, this was 1314, 1298, and one at 697, coincidentally, 1995, for a combined total of 3990. So that's the current on the...
Combined.
Combined on five tax, five different taxes.
3990.
3990 per $100,000.
Yep, that's the total between, and that's a...
Per $100,000, right.
Ms. Edelson? When you say they would not be capital appreciation bonds?
That's correct.
So what would they be?
Capital interest.
Okay.
Current interest, sorry.
Current interest.
Current interest.
And how many years?
25.
25, okay.
Yes.
Explain to me how the 1250, let's just take 1250, can be given if you're going to have three different issues of bonds at three different potential interest rates? How does the, how does the tax rate stay the same?
When we do the economic, when we set up the model, it's called the tax rate model, we have one, it's in existence for the two existing measures that you have already. We start with putting in the assessed values, starting this year, because this is going to be the first year for the authorization, if it passed this year. And then we make an assessed valuation assumption, 4.5% of growth every year. And then we add in interest rates and a 25-year maturity. And we develop a debt service schedule. It's an estimated debt service schedule by... It's an estimated debt service schedule based on the estimates, which is why looking at those estimates are very important, understand how we came to this conclusion. You have to start somewhere, so this is where we start. So with 12.50, which is where we started out, we calculated a debt service, and you divide that by the assessed valuation, the estimate assessed valuation, and we come up with 12.50. And then you do your projections out using those same assumptions all the way. So it's only a beginning of a model. So each year, as we do, as we do this year with both the elementary school and the secondary school, we talk to Ed Price at the county, and we compare notes, because he also has his own special model, which I don't understand, but he doesn't understand mine either. So as long as we talk about the numbers, that's the most important thing. And we make adjustments. Now, Santa Barbara County has a policy of smoothing out your tax rates, which is why they're very much the same all the year. Other counties do not. Other counties, you'll see 15, 14, 13, 12, and then 2008 came along, and all of a sudden it went 14, 15, 16. He tries to keep things even because he thinks that that's a good way to handle your tax rates. And there are a number of counties that do it that way. So we're starting out with very much the same idea. We're trying to smooth out what we have projected, what you're going to need. So we assumed you were going to do three series of bonds over a period of two to three years. And we used, talked to that with Ms. Jete about what you think it would be with your, you know, with what kind of projects you had. One of the values of hearing your project list and what you determined to be your final project list is actually how we adjust this. Let's say that you wanted to build a whole new school, I'm just making this up, right? You would, if you want to build a whole new school, and that was the first thing you wanted to do, you wouldn't do a first bond issuance of $10 million. You probably would need more money than that to build a school. So as we get to know more about how your program's going to look, we refine this, and that $12 will maybe say, well, maybe the second issuance, you can't issue 30 million, you may have to issue 25. So it's a, it's a very, it's a very living doc, living module, if you will, but those are the principles that go into it.
I guess my question is more simple than that.
Sorry.
We issue the first third, the first bond issue.
Uh-huh.
Is that going to be at 12.50 tax levy?
Yes, right.
And then two years later, the interest rates go up 2%. It's still going to be 12.50?
Not if they go up 2%.
Pardon?
Not if they go up 2% because we're using 4.5.
No, no, if the, you say the interest rate plus 2%.
Well, the interest rate, yes, that would be, it would be the same, right.
It stays at 12.50.
Yes, exactly right.
And then it goes up 2.5% to 2021, and it's still 12.50?
And that's why we calibrated it out by those basis points or those percentages. Trying to, it's very, you can imagine what it's trying to figure out, what your interest rate's going to be 10 years from now.
I know, yeah.
So we could make them as high as you like. The higher you make them, the higher your tax rate will be.
That's what I say, so if those projections are low...
Mm-hmm. But what we're also projecting to offset that is an increase in your assessed valuation. We believe you will not be at 4.50. We're using 4, 4.5% AV growth. But that goes up to 5.5%. That means your tax rate's going to go down, right.
But the 10-year average is 4.28.
Mm-hmm, yes. And we work with Bond Council on that to make sure that he's comfortable with our projections for assessed value as well.
Because it's far above our history.
Well, you're, if you look in the, if you go back, if you would, make two, page one or two, either this secondary school or the, you see this little box down here?
Right.
So your 10-year average is 4.28.
Right.
Your five years, 3.59, and your three years, 5.20.
So you're taking the best three years. Yeah, I could go back to 2010, 11, 12, 13.
We can use whatever you want.
I know, but I'm just saying that, you know, you got, you got to look at those things.
Yes.
And then, I guess the other, I guess the other question, in when you're formulating a bond, can you tie in these three different time periods? 217, 219, 2021. Can you tie those in to make sure, because if you, if you move those into an earlier timeframe, do the numbers change?
Of course. That's why we talk all the time once you start your program.
Yeah, so...
Because that's exactly one of the failures of the past.
I know, that's why I'm thinking of the past, and how do you stop it in the future?
You talk, you communicate. You talk with facility, it's facilities and finance and the municipal advisor, and, because we need to know, we're the, we are the numbers keeper, but when you have a change in your facilities plan, or as many districts right now are experiencing, is huge expense, construction expense increases, all right?
I know all those arguments.
Exactly right. So I have, most of my time I'm spending talking to districts about, while we're up, you know, our construction expense is up tremendous amount, we can't even, we can't even finish the building we have. So it is to be discussed, and we can continue to discuss it and will until such time that you start your program. But those are all very good points.
Yeah, the pressure to expedite it will always be there.
Always. But it's, what's good is that you have a way to measure it, and, you know, with, with close tracking of it, which is something we do at my firm, you know that ahead of time. You don't want to go into a program not knowing the risks. That's the most important thing I can do for you, is itemize the risks for you, so you know when you talk about your project list with your facilities people and with your finance people, what the ups and downs are going to be.
Dr. Evenstein, would you like to provide your public comment?
President, pause, members of the board, thank you again for this opportunity to address you on these important issues. First of all, I'd like to commend Ms. Jete and the others who prepared the report. It's excellent in every way in terms of providing the information that you need. And I'd like to say that I agree with the assumptions that are in it and feel that they are reasonable to modestly conservative, which is probably where these sorts of projections should be. If anything, I would say that on the issue, the question of issuing the bonds, that the 2017 bonds might be less than 1% currently in terms of, if it were only, I mean, depends what happens with interest rates yet over the next number of months, we'll have a better idea. But I think that when interest rates are low, that's the time, if possible, to really see what that first batch would be in January of 2017, and then perhaps front-load financing, and it's something that, that can make a difference. So it's something that, that's the one technical aspect that I'd comment on. What I would suggest is that I, I think that particularly the thought that we're already paying in the elementary district, for those of us who are there, $40 or so per $100,000 per 2013-14. You know, if you add another $25 to that, 12.50 per district, that's $65 per district, $65 per $100,000 of assessed valuation, a million-dollar new home, $650 a year, that's, that's not nothing. And for that reason, what I would be inclined to say is that the 12.50 might make sense for the elementary, but that I would try to stay at like 9.50 perhaps for the secondary because it has a larger base. And this figure wasn't included in the materials, but if the proportions would remain the same, a 9.50 per $100,000 in the secondary would generate $115 million. 12.50 per $100,000 would generate 58.8 million in the elementary. That would be a total of about $174 million or something like that between the two, and that would then be either 9.50 in the secondary, or if you were in both districts, about $22. Those, to me, sound like figures that, in the dynamic circumstances of the truly many tax increases that are going to be, or tax proposals that are going to be on the ballot, would be about the range to consider. But I, again, I'm concerned about the poll results on, if you tell people it's $13 per $100,000, the support goes down to the mid-60s. That's, that's not a lot of margin for error. So anyway, those thoughts, thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Limon.
Ms. Jete, if we, if there were to be a state bond matching program, how would that work? Is it dollar for dollar? Is it a percentage? And does it need to come from money set aside, or would school districts pull from general? All of the above?
So the way I understand it, and I wish Ms. Trent Yonk or Kelly wants to chime in, the way I understand it is you have to have items in the queue, approved items in the queue. So if we have approved items in the queue and there is a bond, then those, that money will come to us. How it works after that, I'm not 100% sure how it works after that. Does anybody want to jump in here?
No, we're not.
You got to come to the podium.
Yes, we'll do it. That's about the right process you've defined, and the important thing is to define the projects and get the applications at least preliminary made. For example, we have some projects right now that are ready to go out for bid, are offered right now that are measure Q projects, which we're hoping to get when that money's released, even though the project will be either done or underway when the money's available, we'll be able to go back and get money for that. And that's based on, on the current eligibility that we have, based on what was last done on that site. So it's kind, it's kind of a rolling process, and we have to identify the areas of attack to get the money that's in the different funds. Does that help?
It does. And my reason for asking this question is because, I mean, we're speculating about a lot. And so it just seems also that if there is the opportunity, not just to make the investment, but also, I kind of see a state bond as a potential savings. And I need, I was curious how the process works because if it's a matching process, if we need to approve certain projects, and if our bond will help us also ensure that we have a bigger impact in the investment, I, for me, it's part of the additional conversation we need to have about whether the timing for this bond is good, and we may not, I mean, and we're not going to know a lot of things. We're not going to know a lot of things about our bond or even the state bond until, you know, after November 8th. But I think that in this conversation, that's another element that we can't rely on, but another element that we may be able to consider about our potential, that if locally we invest, we may have the potential to see that impact be greater. And it could influence some of the other things that we do. So that's why I asked.
So to give you a little context, there are eight initiatives that have qualified for the ballot for November 8th. One for June 7th. Out of those nine, I would say the public education facilities bond initiative is probably the one, number one. And in terms of, you know, looking to raise funds, everything else is not looking like it's going to be an impact that's qualified up to this point in time. However, the number of potential items still waiting to get signatures and have rolling deadlines from April 13th, which already passed, including today, going all the way to October the 3rd. And we have a number of them after our own sort of deadline that we have to have. And a number of those look like they would raise funds. A number of them are actually around marijuana and taxi marijuana. But there's a couple, a few that are already here that look like they would be looking at water supply reliability and drought protection initiative, which for me is probably a tax. And so there are a number of different things. Still, we have no idea what's going to happen. So, and in terms of the, the one for public education that we just spoke of, it is $3 billion for the construction of new school facilities, 500 million for providing school facilities for charter schools, $3 billion for the modernization of school facilities, half a billion for providing facilities for career technical education programs, and $2 billion for constructing, renovating, and equipping community college facilities. Just a little more information.
I also think that's the one Governor Brown is opposing.
Yes, you're absolutely correct.
And put your hats on and go back to Measure V for City College. Their main selling point was the matching funds, and they got none. But yet that's what they sold Measure V on, which looked great on paper, looked great in the campaign, but came back to bite them very strongly. And so I would hesitate strongly to talk very much about matching funds if it's dependent upon a vote in November along with our bond. Because if we get our bond passed and that bond doesn't pass, and we can't live up to the expectations we gave, I think we're in big trouble.
Right, and I want to be clear that it wasn't, I don't think we should rely on that, but I think in our consideration, that's one more element that we can consider without relying on that and without promising that.
Okay. Yes, Ms. Parker.
And just following on that before I go on, I mean, the reason that City College didn't get matching, matching funds is because we entered in a huge recession and the funding dried up, so it wasn't available for anybody, and that could totally happen to us. So it's very, very important that we be careful. But again, I appreciate Ms. Limon's point in terms of maybe this is the right time, so that we, if it is available, we're ready. Just taking all of these three things together, I, I think I'm leaning towards having, supporting, putting on two bonds as opposed to just one. Given the amount it's going to cost for the portable replacement alone, that is my priority. And, you know, you can, given what the public says their priority is, there are many ways that we can tie the replacement portables into what the public priority is because it hits those needs as well. You just need to be careful about the wording as we construct it. And also because of that, I can see it being more amenable to going out for less in the secondary district than in the elementary district, where frankly, there is more need and less money. And so if we were going to reduce an amount, I would prefer to reduce it in the secondary district. Getting the National Guard Armory is a huge priority for me, and I think that I agree with Dr. Evenstein's point about it coming from both districts and not just one, to make it really clear that this is a K through 12 facility. And I, I think that if it comes down to it, it's not the time to say what ends up being the ultimate priority, but it's so important that happen, that it would need to, it would mean cuts in other areas, whether it's portables or windows or whatever. But that really is very important, and another reason to me that this might be the right time to run bonds in both districts, because this opportunity will not come again.
I would agree with you. I think that when we look at it in terms of that, I think it makes a lot more sense to do it both of them. I think the big elephant in the room, the big question is going to be the amount, obviously. I mean, that's, that's the huge piece that we're going to need to really tackle and figure out, what, what number would best work for the district in terms of its needs, and then what really is doable. We have enough information right now that, that we have some sense that encourages us in terms of moving this forward, just don't have enough information in terms of a number. And I think that's the, the challenge right now for all of us, is that, that magic number we need to reach. And that, you know, a part of it, I think, is a reflection of us putting a priority on portables. But beyond that, you know, this board's really needing, is going to need to tackle what it is on that whole huge list that we really want to tackle, the most important pieces. I'm not sure right now what that would be, because all of them seem really important. I know we've talked about this a number of times, and we've said it, and we, we gave some general principles, I would say, for staff to kind of look at things and looked at what are the things that are most critical in terms of safety, being a high priority among all those lists. But beyond that, we've kind of gotten to the bottom, and now it's really moving the chess pieces around the board and figuring out which one you really are okay with getting rid of.
Any other questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Herr.
You know, my, my priority are the portables that are in poor condition. Now granted, there may be situations where some of the serviceable ones you have to get rid of just to make, in getting rid of the poor ones, you have to take some of the serviceable ones also, but they might be able to be moved. So I would, I would look at a breakdown of portables that are in poor condition. I would like to see the secondary reduced pretty dramatically and reduce, I mean, obviously I think the elementary on this draft campaign priority is 131 million, you know, is way too high. But hopefully by reevaluating the portables, that number can come down. And as far as roofs, I think roofs are extremely important, assuming that they're really in bad condition. So I'd like to know... So I'd like to know, on the roofs that are involved, do they have another one year, two years, 10 years? You know, how much life do our roofs have that are on this list?
And I know, same thing, in a very similar way, when we looked at some of those other items around the list besides the portables, and we look at, I noted, the one that came to mind was Washington School in terms of looking at plumbing and gas, infrastructure and some of those, I, you know, you would be a better person to tell us in terms of, are we at the edge of destruction, so to speak, at that point in time? Even looking towards the future, what is that going to look like? Some of those are, how critical are we? How much can we let those go, so to speak?
Well, we just put some money into some portables out at Washington.
Not so much the portables. I'm looking at the infrastructure in terms of the gas line and the plumbing part.
Oh, gotcha. Can I have a, can I ask a clarifying question? Mr. Herron, when you say portables in prior, poor condition, so they're listed right now in condition. So this is also a question for Kelly. Like, when we look at the elementary portables for, in the list of poor condition, is that meaning those 17 portables at Peabody are in the worst condition? Or are there other sites that have worse ones or right there? So you know what I mean? So do you want, like Adams has three, Peabody has four. You know, is that what you're asking for?
Look at the-
For district-wide?
Yeah, the poor ones come first.
The worst ones?
Yeah. And see where that takes us.
Okay.
And then, and some of the serviceable ones are old also, but they're still, we've redone them. And so they're still in good, you know, workable condition. And so they wouldn't be classified as poor, even though they're old. I forget where they are, but there are some that are, the ones we're moving to Adelante and from Monroe.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think they're in good condition. But now we want to take out all the portables at Adelante to put up a new building.
Ms. Idelson?
Yeah. I do think, though, if you're taking out portables, building a new building, you also want to look at enrollment at these schools.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's not just, I mean, if you're going to invest the capital in, you know, a long-term structure.
Well, and I also don't want to, we don't want to build to what we have now in case we grow.
Right.
So, yes. So that's what you're saying, is keep a future ADA growth in mind.
Right.
Absolutely.
If you're looking at a location that may be decreasing enrollment, and then you put all this revenue, a resource into building, permanent buildings, you may end up with something that's not as appropriate. But I feel in support of a bond in some, I mean, keeping it fairly conservative. But I feel, as a community, it's important that we offer Santa Barbara the opportunity to vote in favor of this. And similarly with the Armory, since it's been something that has, you know, been a dream, I think, for so many people for so many years. So I think if we can come up with something that will potentially pass, that's great. If it doesn't pass, I think that's a strong message, that people want to stick with, you know, structures and poor repair that aren't going to cut it into the future. But that's something that is a choice.
So this priority list, the revised priority list, you want this by next board meeting? In May? May 10th? Is that possible, Kelly?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Ms. Parker?
I actually don't think that's important right now. I think, I mean, we're going to need to come up with a total, but I mean, where the priorities are, or something, that's for when we're actually doing the work. And that could be flexible. I mean, we do need it sort of roughly in the sense of we're going to be asking for a specific amount.
Right.
But the reality is, it's going to be so much far less than our need, that I don't know that that's as relevant at this immediate point.
Because you could work it both ways. You could take your priority and say, this is what we want to do, and this is our bond amount. Or you could say, this is our bond amount, what can we do with that money? So that's what, we would love direction on that.
And I tend to agree. I think that that's one of the things that I think we need to be really careful about. I think Mr. Herron's pointed out a couple of times when we did this before, we promised, and we didn't follow through on some of the promises, so to speak. And I think that that is a concern, and we need to be really careful about what we say in terms of that. Ms. Leemon?
I actually was going to say the same thing. I don't think that I need to see another priority list. I feel we've had multiple conversations on this board, and I'm not hearing anything different coming out of where our priorities are. We're moving numbers a bit here and there. But I also think that in the last bond, I feel like we've made a commitment to the public and we've kept it. I really believe that in the last bond, we have made that commitment, we've been clear what we're moving forward. I don't know that this is the moment, but I feel like if we're going to pick priorities, then it's priority areas, not priority projects at this point. I'm looking at what was presented to us, and, you know, around the words of repair technology, you know, I think it's the areas that we would pick. I also want to be very careful. We don't know what's going to happen in November. We don't know, I mean, there may be a different board, or there may not be, well, Mr. Herron has said he's not running for sure, but, but I think it's, I also feel like we can't promise the public projects, knowing that this board may change. But I think we could be clear about the priority areas. So I don't personally need to see another priority list, but I do think it would be useful in the future to have a conversation about priority areas. And maybe it's just words that we would potentially put into a future bond. I hear what Ms. Idelson is saying, that at the end of the day, this board is voting to give the public an opportunity to make a decision. I want to be clear that really, whether we decide to put a bond out or not, we're not making the choice. And we're not necessarily, the five of us, agreeing to what we're putting forward. We're leaving that opportunity to the public. And that, I have a lot of, a positive feeling towards, of just saying, look, there's all these things related to the timing right now, and we're going to give the public the opportunity to weigh in. And if we lose it, then that's where the public has spoken. I don't, you know, but if not, then I think the public has spoken. And so I appreciate that. I'm not clear personally on the numbers piece of it. I would love to know for sure. You know, I previously asked, like, is it allowed to take money from both, right, bonds to put into the Armory? Is there stipulations about that? So I'd like to know that coming forward.
I have a note to talk to legal about that. I want to make sure that's-
And I don't know. Like, I mean, is it percentage-wise? Like, is there restrictions that we need to consider, that there's expectations of use if also investment is made? I think that's a huge piece. And I don't want to underestimate that. We've been talking about that property before any of us were elected on this board. For decades, this community has been talking about that property. So I think it's important at least to consider it and further explore this. Again, the amount, I'm less clear about, but I do feel like some interest in considering the opportunity itself to allow the public to weigh in on this decision.
Any other comments, questions?
I just, I guess I feel the need to know, if we don't go $179,000 and we go $115,000, $115 million, that means 64 million has to be taken away from this. And where's it going to be taken away from? I guess we could come up with a number and just say, okay, that's the number, and leave it up to the future to spend it. I don't think that's going to go over very big with the public, but we could do that. So it would help me to know what we're not going to do, because we're spending 20 million on the Armory. I am in favor of the Armory. I was on that committee for four years. We met once.
[laughing]
Yeah. And nobody ever thought it could happen. And so this is an opportunity, and we have to do it. But we have to keep in mind that it is going to take away from our students something. And just, I'd like to know what.
So would you, I'm sorry?
Okay. I know Dr. Cass's wish was for us to develop an actual priority list tonight, but I'm also looking at the time. And so we can either go through that process or just eliminate some things on the agenda.
I think we should try to finish our discussion at this point in time. I'm not sure if we're ready to create a priority list at this point in time, and based on what we, I think a number of us have said, I don't think that is as critical as the, looking at sort of areas.
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yeah. I mean, I would just say that I don't think at this point in time, because it will change in the future, and it would be misleading to the public to say, oh, it's going to be these seven, you know, portables at Adams and these 10 portables at Peabody. I feel like that's misleading, and that it is more relevant to talk about priority areas. Like, we will, this is how much money we're going to spend. The board has made clear that it's going to be on portable replacement and the National Guard Armory. And it, you know, we need to be clear that we won't be able to do all of the portables the way we had this one fantasy at one point. But that is something that we will be working on.
So I have a question. Okay, so no priority list. What about if we bring back different scenarios financially? What that means, what that looks like? And also bond language? How is that?
I think the, you know, the sort of common theme here has been areas of, on the list, you know, priority, areas of priority.
Right.
But not specifics. So, you know, like, if you look at, you know, windows that are historic buildings, I think everybody feels that's important, whether that's, you know, higher, of higher importance than the portable replacement in classrooms, or equal, or a boiler at Santa Barbara High. I mean, things that, and roofs, I mean, these are all high items, but-
Well, we'd have to speak in general terms.
Right.
Because we only have 75 words.
Oh, okay.
So, right? So we have to, we have to construct our words carefully.
Sure.
So that it leaves us open, but gives them enough information when they go to vote, that they understand what they're voting for. So that's tricky right there. So we can, we can do a couple different drafts of the language, and then we'll bring some new finances back. And take it from there?
Yes.
May 10th?
May 10th.
May 10th? May, what about, well, we have to make a decision by June, or we'll miss our timeline. So we have to vote on a resolution if we're going to do that on June 28th.
I think it's best to do it by the May 10th board meeting.
Okay.
The reason I think is that if there's more questions, more discussion, we know more by May 10th, or we know more by the end of May. We still have enough time to make some changes.
Okay. May 10th?
Ms. Leemon? And this might be the last comment.
No, that's, yeah. I recall the last time we did this, it took a good portion of the board meeting, so perhaps it won't this time. But I also want to just toss out there, if we really are on a timeline, that we think not just about May 10th, but if we need to do something different. I mean, we are already jammed, packed in May. But if I recall correctly, this, this part of it, and even, oh my gosh, the wordsmithing part, took a long time.
And-
The last time we did it. So I just want to be honest, because we've already taken stuff off the agenda for tonight. And if May 10th is the same.
We will.
We will then start falling behind. We also said that in May, the two May meetings, we're having the LCAP hearings. So I just want to be very honest about what we can or can't do. And I don't know, it may not take long this time, but I do recall that, I mean, it took a while.
Yes. And I think that the other part, too, to remember is that May is also pretty packed, because we have a superintendent search going on at the same time. So we have a lot going on. So at this point in time, do you have enough direction, Ms. Chate?
Yes, thanks. Appreciate it.
At this point in time, we need to look at the agenda, and we, I would propose, item seven and eight could be tabled. But looking at the rest of the agenda, items four, five, and six, are those able to be tabled?
That was what I was going to recommend.
Okay. So we're going to table items four, five, six, seven, and eight. And we will have those at a future agenda. Yes?
Mr. Rickman has a comment regarding one of those.
So?
Item four is kind of a time-sensitive matter with a suggestion by counsel to change the wording to, on a BP-NAR.
Okay.
By legal counsel?
Yes, correct.
Do we have a deadline set?
They asked that we do it as soon as possible. And so it has to be, this is the first reading, and then it has to come back.
Okay. I'm looking at the clock right now. How quickly can we go through item number nine?
It's a, it's a reasonable meeting, it took me about an hour.
No.
So, or we can move that. If it's just an update, then it's not the public hearing.
Ward?
I mean, I don't know about the rest of you, but I can tell you on item four, that I had no comments or questions about the language on that. If we just want to get that up on the screen, we could do that in-
And then we can do item nine.
And then item nine.
Yes.
The abridged version.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go.
I'll be brief. Good evening, President Paz. I'm always tempted to say President Doctor. Sorry, President Paz and Ward. The changes before you are suggested by counsel due to the adoption of SB 178. So I'm here to answer questions.
So what we have is the document? I thought you said legal counsel wanted to make the changes.
Yeah, these change, the changes that are suggested by legal counsel to the BP-NAR.
Ms. Parker?
Is this CSBA boilerplate language?
No, this comes from our attorneys.
Our attorneys? So, hm, I'm curious how different it is from, or has CSBA not updated recently?
I don't believe CSBA has updated.
Okay, so we're kind of getting ahead.
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Leemon?
BP 4040, second paragraph sentence, where it says, "And shall use them primarily for purposes related to their employment."
Correct.
Why primarily? Why not just them for purposes related to their employment?
It's been that way. I think it's unrealistic to assume that everything a person does on their computer, there's, our lives are so meshed now, our personal and work lives on our devices, that they get occasionally used to send an email here or there. I'll provide you with, we're going to update the acceptable use policy once you guys comment on this. And that is also in the incidental, occasional, personal use of devices, as long as it doesn't interfere with your work.
Thank you.
Is basically what it says.
Thanks.
I think a lot of places of employment are pretty much along those lines.
Yeah.
Any other questions, comments? No, I think we are okay with bringing this back on consent? Yes? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So with that, we are tabling items five, six, seven, eight. So that brings us to item number nine.
You can put up the PowerPoint.
PowerPoint is not attached to the agenda.
It should be. The one attached to the agenda is different than this.
Yeah.
The one on the agenda is what you gave to the public, Dr. Drouet.
There it goes.
Or more or less what you gave to the public.
There it goes. Thank you. As mentioned earlier by Dr. Paz, this is an update on the 1617 Local Controlled Account Bill to Plan. I want to first remind the public that the funding formula for, the funding formula to public education- to public education changed since Proposition 30 passed four years ago. The changes after Prop 30 allows for local control and more flexibility in how districts can spend the funds, additional supplemental funding above the general student population for students who are considered to be low-income status, English learner and foster youth. And lastly, an additional level of funding for districts who have a concentration of population described, just described, above the 55% threshold. Each district is expected to develop a local plan that addresses students' needs in eight priority areas. The plan referred to as the Local Controlled Accountability Plan requires input from students, staff, parents and community. The eight priorities that LCAP is to address include what is listed up here. I'm sure you're all familiar with it. Santa Barbara Unified School District has two, two-phase, has a two-phase process by which the community is engaged in the process. The first phase that we have already accomplished involves a presentation and review of a district data, of district data regarding the eight LCAP priorities. The experience involved meetings with faculty, parents, students and several, and several parent committees listed here for feedback. The second phase we are currently involved in is a presentation of the next year's plan based on the feedback received from the first phase. In the second phase, the district goes back out to the community to present the LCAP. This time, we hold a few regional meetings and include two public hearings. A major, a major difference you will see from the previous LCAP to this year's LCAP is the organization of the goals. The previous, the previous iteration of the LCAP included 28 goals. Based on feedback from the state, from stakeholders, we streamlined the 28 goals and aligned them to four Santa Barbara Unified, to the, to the four Santa Barbara Unified School District aims, plus one, one additional one for early, for early, early childhood education. I will now review the district's actions aligned to the five LCAP goals, starting with goal number one, and that is to prepare all students to be life, career and college ready. For time's sake, for the sake of time, I would primarily highlight new actions as the majority of the actions are consistent with previous actions within the LCAP. We want to implement a district-wide assessment continuum from TK 12 grade, from grade TK 12. We believe that having common data points that we can review as leadership, as a leadership team will highly, will be highly, will be highly informative in us making curricular decisions throughout the process of educating our students. We want to expand the PEAK program to our schools located in the Galida, in the Galida We want to continue to work with equal opportunity schools in identifying students who have the potential to take advanced courses so that our sites can take action in asking them to, to do so. We want to, we want to continue to provide professional learning to our teachers. One additional need is for us to add a social science teacher on special, on special assignment who will facilitate the professional learning around the new social science standards the state is rolling out, starting next year. If I'm going too fast, just stop me on it. We want to implement the American School Counseling Guidelines. We believe this process will enhance our counselors' ability to better support our students in their work. As a, also as a district's parcel tax and startup support for the arts in the elementary from community, from the community comes close, close to sunsetting, we want to continue to support the arts in the elementary schools through the LCAP. We wanted to continue to support and expand the co-teaching structure as we believe this is the best way to serve our special education students who are on track to earn high school We want to expand the Academies for Success Program to the three comprehensive high schools. This is a program that originated from Dos Pueblos High School and has proven to be very successful in supporting students who are, by and large, on a pathway to dropping out of school.
Excuse me, did I read today where that program got a huge donation from the women's fund?
Absolutely. It's, it's highly supported by the community. At some point, I will bring the data to you to show the longitude of the data that the program has done at Dos Pueblos and the reason why we want to expand it. So that, that will come sometime this summer. We want to continue to support outdoor science camp for all sixth graders. And I hope you noticed I'm not, I'm not going over every, every bullet point because a lot of those are repeats from the previous LCAPs. We want to implement a district-wide literacy plan that incorporates balanced literacy, a balanced literacy approach at the elementary and a shared and focused literacy plan at the secondary level. We recently received $1.3 million from the state as an incentive to create and establish career technical education pathways that lead to certification on a particular trade. We want to continue our plans to, our plans to hire a certified elementary school librarian to support all elementary, all elementary sites. It's comforting to see that the community actually likes the idea of enhancing the libraries at the elementary, so this will, this will, this will come in handy. Goal number two is to engage our students, families and the community in effective educate, as effective, in effective educational partnerships. Within that goal, we want to better support our homeless and foster youth by hiring a social worker, a social worker whose primary focus will be to help identify and support families with information and guidance. We want to expand the community of schools concept that already exists in the West Side and East Side schools to Galida and continue to do all, all of the items listed on this Goal number three is, is through organizational transformation, develop a culturally proficient district to ensure success for our students. Within this goal, we want to continue to expand and increase the effectiveness of our restorative approaches initiative. We want to continue to support our elementary schools with social workers and our secondary schools with CADA and YSS counselors. We want to continue to incorporate the Attitude Harmony Achievement, the program otherwise known as AHA, to all the secondary sites. We want to continue to embrace the diversity in our schools and community by engaging in professional learning, courageous and constructive discourse and removal of identifiable barriers to access and opportunity. Our staff, teachers and students' voices in the work is essential and we want to continue to support the efforts to increase effective communication. Goal four is to create and maintain well-equipped and modern learning spaces. We must continue to see and use our facilities as a major part of the learning environment. Therefore, we need to be, we need to be efficient with our ground, with our grounds upkeep and landscaping and continue our drought-resistant planting program. We also want to make sure there is efficient wireless connectivity at all district sites. Goal number five is to enhance early childhood education opportunities. And within this, this goal, we want to, we want to develop and implement a plan where pre-kindergarten education is available for all students in their neighborhood schools. We want to implement an early education strategic plan. We also want to launch a school readiness mobile program to promote literacy, parent engagement and outreach. Furthermore, we want to increase the number of seats for four-year-olds at our sites. We want all, all preschool sites accredited and we also want to continue to expand partnerships with private and public community organizations and agencies. We welcome input from the community and all stakeholders. Listed here are opportunities for the public to provide input in the LCAP process. As listed, we plan to offer the board to adopt the LCAP, the 1617 LCAP, along with the district budget on June 28th.
Dr. Drouet.
Yes.
This is the one where May, May 10th need to be put in there for a public hearing.
Absolutely.
And the April 26th was not a public hearing, but May 10th and May 24th are public hearings, I believe.
Yes, it will make the necessary adjustments. Yes. So I went, I went pretty fast through that, so I'll just, I'll leave you with questions.
Questions, Board?
At some point, is there, I mean, are we eliminating anything? Are there things that aren't going to be, that were in last year that won't be in this year?
Yes, at the public hearing, we will, the next presentation I'll bring is maybe a two, a two-column list with areas where you will see what we, what we will not do and what we will do.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
Will that also to some extent come to us with some of the general, some of the bigger items that we're cutting for general fund or is that list only for LCAP? So I think two meetings ago, yeah, they're two separate things, but I think two meetings ago, we also had talked about seeing two lists, like the way we used to do it, but I'm just curious if that's totally different time, different topic.
We can, we can bring the other list too. And we, we have not developed the, the final choices for 1718, for the cuts.
In terms of what I will present to you, is, you understand it's still preliminary because we're still going through the second phase and I'm sure we'll get some requests that we will need to consider.
Ms. Parker.
I just want to say that I'm, you know, I know Mr. Herron had touched on before that there's been less community participation in the process this year. And there may be different ways and there were some, he had some great suggestions on ways to increase that again. I do think part of it is that, you know, kind of it was exciting and dynamic the first year and then it's like, oh, and then we're going to kind of keep working on it, right? And, and so it's not quite so exciting for the public to participate in. But I just want to just give a shout out to staff because, I mean, you guys are on it constantly and I think we have a really good LCAP. And I really appreciate the, what input the community has given on it, I think has been important. And certainly in terms of sustaining what the community originally gave input on is very important to us. As we see, you know, what works and, and what our students really need. So thank you and I guess we'll be seeing this again several more times.
Ms. Herron.
Yeah, I think I remember from last year, but correct me. At some point, we see how the supplemental grant goes to English learners, low-income and foster youth.
Yes.
And sometimes the same item will cover everybody and also that group.
Yes.
Did you give us a breakdown like that?
Yes, you will, you will get that list as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering about the same thing myself. Ms. Lee Mon.
And I just want to call out one, one item in the LCAP. So, and I appreciate that this has actually been input from multiple stakeholders, right? Not just the district. And I know that when the board expressed interest in science camp, there was a lot of questions about why science camp, right?
Yeah.
And not other opportunities. So I'm glad to see it there. But I also want to make it very clear for all stakeholders involved that, at least on my part, science camp is something that our students really look forward to. And if you talk to students in sixth grade, they're most excited about that. Also, understanding that for a lot of our students, that's their only opportunity to actually be in the outdoors. And knowing that and also knowing that this doesn't replace a reading intervention program, this does not replace a technology program, this does not replace anything else, is something that, you know, I wanted to mention because I've gotten a lot of feedback about, you know, different stakeholders' opinion about science camp being there. And so I just, I really wanted to mention that and I think that it's one example of really this being a multi-stakeholder element as opposed to a traditional model of budgeting where it's mostly driven by just one stakeholder.
I just wanted to comment that I'm, you know, I'm very happy that we continue to look at our goal number five for early care and education. And I think that's really critically important that we're not looking at it like it's something out there, that it's part of what we see as a district goal and part of what we do as a district, which is great. Not many districts are doing that. I would say we're probably the only one in the entire county. I'm not sure if any other district really, to be honest with you. Ms. Herron.
Your boss, Ben Robo, gave a great update of the, what happens to the child's brain, before they even get to kindergarten.
Yep.
And how much having that early child education affects them kindergarten on.
And maybe at some point, Mr. Robo could give us a shorter version of the issue, but it
is so powerful, you know, so.
Yes.
Very good.
And I agree. I think it's an investment well-spent in that regard because it will pay off quite a bit once they get into kindergarten. Mr. Drouet, any, anything else?
That's it.
Okay. That moves us to item number 10, the update on the search for new superintendent. Just wanted to say a couple, a few couple things. One is that our preferred deadline came and went, which was, I believe, the 15th. And we have a number of applicants, quite a bit. So board members have access to the applications. I know all of us have had an opportunity to look at some of those. And Ms. Parker and Ms. Lee Mon worked on interview questions and provided a draft to Dr. Castrina for his review, I believe. And in terms of the future, we have May 7th, the consultants will interview our top candidates. We have to look at a location. I think our charge is.
Seventeenth?
The 7th.
Oh, the 7th.
Yeah.
Seventeenth.
Okay. Well, the 17th is a special board meeting. Maybe I have dates wrong.
I think so. We're going.
Okay.
I think on the 17th, we get their suggestions of the top.
Okay.
They may be interviewing them, everybody, but we get, I think on the 17th, we get the.
I think that, I think before that, we get the, the top candidates that we, yeah.
And then we interview, we.
Yeah, then we interview.
And we talk about them on the 17th, I believe.
Yes, correct.
Can I ask for clarification? So does that mean that they interview all of them and then bring them?
No, they're going to bring, they're going to bring a slate. I believe it's the top seven.
So, hm, I think that's a little different than.
I think they're going to bring us their recommendations.
Mm-hmm. But that doesn't preclude us from, from.
Asking them to put someone in the.
Yes, correct.
So it looks like.
My, May, May 7th, based on our calendar, consultants interview top candidates that have met the criteria, location to be returned.
That's them.
Yes. That's our consultants, not us. That's what I was mentioning. And consultants, that's who they have thought that our top candidates would be based on the profile that we have developed and the community has developed. Again, that's why we have an opportunity for ourselves to look at the whole slate of candidates and if they, we don't agree, we feel like they need to consider someone else. While in agreement of that, I think that we have the opportunity to up that number of, of candidates. And then May 17th is a special board meeting that we have here in the district boardroom. And then future forwards, semifinalist interviews are May 25th and 26th, again TBD. And then beyond that, June, May 31st, June 1st and June 2nd, final interviews. And then sometime around June, we will announce. And then sometime around June, we will announce.
Miss Lehman?
Yes, along with everything else. That brings us to any coming events, future agenda items. Miss Lehman?
So two coming events. I did, the Autism Society of Santa Barbara gave me flyers for a fundraiser that is happening actually tomorrow evening, but they wanted me to make sure to let folks know that they can go to Patsy's Pizza for a 10% donation that will be made to the Autism Society. I also know it's our district's, is it Evening of the Stars?
Night of Stars.
Night of Stars. Official event for some of the staff that's being recognized, but I did want to announce that. Additionally, before our next meeting on May 5th, I want to make sure that everybody and the board is invited to the Harding Cinco de Mayo event, and it's from 4:00 to 7:00. It's family-friendly, and make sure you let me know if you're coming, because I get to emcee the event. But, and then some, it's at, at Harding School.
Okay.
At Harding School. And the other piece is that I don't know if we can have a board, maybe in the weekly board report. I have been, some of us on the board have received a letter about the concern with the Milpas Street Marijuana Dispensary, and I also have been approached by several parents on the east side in relation to this and schools and safety, and so I just, I don't know if our principals are talking about it, thinking about it, and if there's anything that we need to know as board members, we don't make the final decision, but since I've now heard from multiple parents who do feel that this has an implication for schools, I'm just, I don't know what's happening, if it's a non-issue, if it's an issue, I don't know.
Yeah, we will, we'll be interested in seeing the letter, so that we can...
I know at least three of us got it.
I don't think it was a letter as much as an, well, it was, it was a letter attached to an email, right? Correct.
So, yeah, maybe we can forward it to...
Forward it to us, yeah. Just forward it to me.
Okay.
Okay. Ms. Herron.
Yeah, just, the autism is all day, so you can go to lunch.
Oh, all day.
You can go to lunch. And there's a, I think, just prior to tomorrow night, there's also, I think, the Adelanti Art Show from 5:00 to 7:00. I think that, I think it's tomorrow night.
Yes. Hang on, go ahead.
Yeah, and then, of course, Thursday, the Hope Awards honoring Dr. Cash. And I just also want to remind people, I know that we all got emails about this from Carol Tate about the Santa Barbara County Schools Association Annual Dinner on Thursday, May 12th up in San Ynez.
That's correct.
And just as a heads up, I believe that that is the same night that Safe Launch is doing the program that we approved at the board meeting for partial funding. Busy time.
Where's that? Where's the Safe Launch?
The Safe Launch one is at La Cumbre Junior High School.
There's another event happening on May 12th as well.
And Diklexia is having an event May 11th.
That's right.
At La Cumbre. And the art show is Thursday night. It's the, you know, it's the ICANN art show, just before the Hope Awards.
And, and all of us are going, I believe, all five of us, so we'll make sure not to sit at the same table. No other future agenda, or future agenda items? If not, I'd like to, go ahead.
The changing of the date for...
Well, yes, the...
October, let's see.
October, what was it?
It was...
Changing the meeting from October 11th to Monday, October 10th?
Yes. For Yom Kippur.
Yes. Going from Tuesday to Monday, basically. You're welcome.
One of the things to add to the future sometime, I know that Just Communities did a, a big study with the staff, and I would like to see the results of that study.
Would you like that in the presentation to the board, or just a...
Report.
More of this?
I don't know what it is or what it looks like.
Okay.
So I guess it depends. I mean, it's one of those things that, you know, the board's asked for.
Okay.
And so I don't know how the board feels, if they want to just see it individually, and then, once we see it, decide what we want to make, review it collectively, because sometimes those things, we get a lot of stuff when each other, each of us talks about it.
Okay.
So I don't, I don't know what it is, so.
Okay.
If nothing else, we'd like to adjourn. Yay.